Good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Melnick, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 on this 12th day of November 2024. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Kendrick, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Excellent. Thank you. Please join me in observing a moment of silence. Tonight, I would like to welcome the Newcastle Elementary School 5th Grade Chorus and Mrs. Jenica Hall, Chorus Director. After the Pledge of Allegiance, these students will be singing the National Anthem. At this time, if you would, please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. That was amazing. And this evening, the School Board has the pleasure of recognizing students and staff for their achievements.
This evening, the School Board has the pleasure of recognizing students and staff for their achievements. I just read the second thing, second time around. Arbor Day Tree Campus Recognitions. Our first recognition this evening is for schools who have earned national distinction as Arbor Day Tree Campuses. Please welcome representatives from Corporate Landing Elementary, Thalia Elementary, and Corporate Landing Middle. Tree Campus K-12 inspires the next generation of tree stewards through experiences that bring the benefits of trees to life, both inside and outside the classroom. The program fosters positive connections between youth and the trees in their community, and cultivates within its participants a lifelong respect for trees on a global scale. Corporate Landing Elementary, Thalia Elementary, and Corporate Landing Middle met Tree Campus's requirements through Arbor Day celebrations, hands-on experiences, and school-wide learning supported by a Tree Campus team. Only 84 schools earned this honor nationwide, with only five in Virginia. Thank you, Principals Jennifer Hawes, Nicole Carros, and Robert Yoshida for leading tree-friendly schools. And thank you, Bridget Mariano, K-12 Programs and Grants Coordinator, for helping our schools achieve this recognition. Congratulations. We are so proud of you.
Our next recognition is for the Virginia Association of Adult Continuation Education's Teacher of the Year. Please welcome Lisa Markovic from the Adult Learning Center. In addition to being the Virginia Association's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Markovic is also the Virginia Beach Adult Learning Center's Teacher of the Year. She is an enthusiastic, passionate, and devoted teacher who truly loves her students. She has been a full-time faculty member of the Adult Learning Center team for seven years. Ms. Markovic currently has a dynamic leadership role within the Center's literacy program, helping adult students learn the English language and advance their future college career goals. She is a leader at the Center aligning classroom activities that empower our future-ready students to achieve their academic and personal goals. She spends countless hours tutoring students before and after class. She has a positive and nurturing relationship with her students. Ms. Markovic models professional growth by leading the Center's professional learning community, the Sunshine Committee, and by serving in many other roles. Through community partnerships, Ms. Markovic connects her students with mentors. She motivates her colleagues to take their instructional abilities to the next level as well. Congratulations, Mrs. Markovic. We are so proud of you.
Next, we'd like to honor schools who have received the Virginia Board of Education's Highest Achievement Award. Virginia Beach City Public Schools had eight schools earn this award, more than any division in the state. Woo-hoo! To earn this recognition, schools must be accredited and meet state benchmarks in reading, math, and science. In addition, all student groups within the school must meet state benchmarks in reading and math, and have no more than 10 percentage points between the lowest-performing group and all other students in the school. They must also demonstrate a current-year chronic absenteeism rate of 15% or lower. We'll recognize each school individually. All right. First, we recognize representatives from Cox High School. Please come forward. Hit their head there.
Congratulations, Cox High School. We are very proud of you. Next, we'll recognize Green Run Collegiate. Please come forward. Congratulations, Green Run Collegiate. We are very proud of you. Next, we'll recognize Ocean Lakes High School. Please come forward. And there she is. Congratulations, Ocean Lakes High School. We are very proud of you. Next, we'll recognize Old donation School. Please come forward. Congratulations, Old donation School. We are proud of you. Next, we'll recognize Princess Anne Elementary School. Please come forward. Congratulations, Princess Anne Elementary. We are proud of you. Next, we'll recognize Shelton Park Elementary School. Please come forward. Congratulations, Shelton Park Elementary. We are very proud of you. Next, we'll recognize Tallwood Elementary School. Please come forward. Congratulations, students and staff at Tallwood Elementary. We are proud of you. Next, we'll recognize Tallwood High School. Please come forward. Congratulations, Tallwood High School. We are proud of you and proud of all of the recipients.
Our final recognition this evening is for the Virginia Board of Education's Continuous Improvement Award. Please welcome representatives from Green Run High School. Green Run High School is one of the 49 schools in Virginia receiving this distinction. To qualify, schools must be accredited or accredited with conditions and meet at least one of the following criteria with three years of data: An increase in the combined rate for math, reading, and science for each of the past three years with a total increase across the three years of 10 points or more; An increase in the combined rate for two or more student groups in reading and math for each of the past three years with a total increase across three years of 10 points or more; Or an increase in the graduation and completion index for each of the past three years with a total increase across the three years of 4% or more. And the school demonstrates a decrease in the dropout rate for each of the past three years with a total reduction across three years of 15% or more of the first year's dropout rate. Congratulations, Green Run High School. We are so proud of you. This concludes the School Board Recognitions for this evening.
Okay, now on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? I do have two. I'm sorry? I do, yes. So, first, I'd like to add Mrs. Kendrick's Resolution to Consent E. And then to Action E, the VSPA proposed Legislative Positions Amendments and proposed By-Law Amendments. So it's Legislative Positions and By-Law Amendments for VSPA. Under information. Oh, no. No, no, no. I did say action, and I said "action" because the conference is next week. And so it was asked of us to bring this forward to action. Does anybody have anything else?
Okay, then I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Motion made by Ms. Kendrick, second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Okay, then the voting board is open.
Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes for the adoption of the agenda as modified, so the motion did pass.
Okay, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Robertson, do you have any recognitions this evening?
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you. Tonight, we want to recognize three individuals. We'll start first with Erin Pop. We are pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Erin Pop, currently an Admin Assistant at Princess Anne in three X Elementary Schools, to be the next Assistant Principal at WT Cook Elementary School. Congratulations. I see you have some guests. Next up is Megan Scott. Megan has already started the position, but we're getting her in here tonight. She is now the Coordinator of Gifted Education in the Office of K-12 Gifted Programs. Congratulations. And Megan, I see you have some guests. Very good. Congratulations. And then finally, one last one, Alicia Smith. She has also started her position. She formerly was a Coordinator of Procurement Services. Now she's the Director of Procurement Services in the Office of Procurement Services. Alicia, I see you have some guests. Procure some guests. So we appreciate all the guests coming here tonight because they do important work for us, and you may miss them a little bit, but we won't wear them out too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item 10 is the Approval of Meeting Minutes. Are there any modifications to the October 22nd, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? All right. Hearing none, I call for a motion to approve those minutes. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, second by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? The voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the minutes from October 22nd.
We will begin public comment this evening with a public hearing on the Building Utilization Committee's rezoning recommendation for Point of View Elementary School and Larkspur Middle School. The School Board will now hear those public comments, beginning with public hearing on the Building's Utilization Committee rezoning recommendations, and then on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the Public Comment section of the School Board Agenda is for School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with kindness and respect. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. And Madam Clerk, will you please announce our first speaker?
Thank you. Our first speaker for the public hearing is T. Alexander Cloud Jr., and then it'll be Susan Hughes.
Welcome.
And just wait one moment. We have to put the microphone on.
Thank you kindly. And where is Ms. Hughes, so I can drag my comments out? Oh, sorry. You're next. Got it. Bye-bye. All right. Well, greetings and good evening. I see my time's already started. I'm here to offer my public comments under the rezoning proposal. So like most parents, this took me a little bit by surprise, only because we're not looking for things like this every day. So I do what most people do, and they find out a new proposal's coming. I researched it and checked the Internet. It turns out US News and World Report ranks elementary schools. I did not know that. So I'll tell you the tale of two schools that I found on this website, full of publicly-available information, that showed me the school that my son is currently attending Arrowhead, scores roughly 62% in proficiency in math, 72% in reading. This is roughly on par with the district average and well above the state average. They are ranked number 240 of all the elementary schools in the state, and they have a 13:1 teacher-to-student ratio. All of these, to me, are great things. I grew up in Orlando, Florida, and we did not enjoy that low of a teacher-to-student ratio. Then I looked up Point of View. They're ranked number 533 in schools across the state. Their math proficiency is at 44%. Their reading proficiency is at 58%. And it'll be the math proficiency is 20% below the district average. It is also below the state average. They have a 16:1 teacher-to-student ratio, and that's the school that my son would be rezoned for. Now, the school at the rezoning commission meeting, we were told was already overcrowded, and this rezoning is being made to ease overcrowding, and all of these are good things. However, I'm my son's parent, so his interests are of paramount importance to me. So those statistics prompted really two questions. The first being for parents whose kids are, and I can't see another way to put it, taking a step down in terms of test score achievement, what is the plan? Is it either to alter the rezoning proposal so that nobody has to be added into an already overcrowded school, which seems to make logical sense? Or alternatively, and I would be a fool not to believe the alternative here, my humble ask is that, especially in light of all the previous achievement we've seen tonight, the things that makes Virginia Beach attractive for people to move to four schools, eight schools, the most of any district, is to please prioritize this school's improvement and achievement as the top priority. Believe Arrowhead was rebuilt within the last 10 to 15 years. Point of View was originally constructed around the same time, and it would seem something akin to that, and all other measures would be appropriate. May I please the board?
Our next speaker is Susan Hughes.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Susan, and I live in one of the areas that is going to be affected by the rezoning. When purchasing my home, I looked at the different areas in the city and the schools, and I chose Kempsville and Arrowhead Elementary School. Shortly after buying my home, my grandson was tested and now has an IEP. They asked where we lived, and we told them, and they said that Arrowhead would be a great school for him and for him to get the help that he needed. He is getting to know his teachers and counselors, and they're getting to know him, and they're figuring out what works best for him because it changes every day. And now you want to move him to a different school, and he would have to start this process over again with new teachers and counselors, and I don't feel that that would be good for him. You want to rezone the whole area when I feel that there are just two schools that have an issue. Point of View will have too many kids, and Kempsville will have not enough kids by your projection in the next five years. You want to take 40 kids, give or take, from Arrowhead and give them to Point of View, and take 40 kids, give or take, from Point of View and give them to Arrowhead. This makes no sense. Part of the kids coming from Point of View are being projected to come from an apartment development on Grandwich that hasn't even been finished being built and is projected to be finished the end of 2025. My suggestion is to give my area, Area B, back to Arrowhead, and part of Area A, which gives part of Area A back to Point of View, which would be the apartments that are currently being built, and then make Area D bigger for Kempsville. Everyone says and wants parents and grandparents and families to be involved with their child's education. Sorry, boners. And I'm here being involved and saying that this rezoning is not good for my child or anybody else's child, and they should find another way. Thank you.
We'll move to our online speaker for the public hearing. Sarah Leland, please unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Sarah. Please go ahead.
Okay, great. Good evening, and thank you. God, let that go. I'm so sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Our family resides in Kempsville Heights, the only neighborhood that I'm aware of that is proposed to be rezoned out of Kempsville Elementary into Point of View. I have two children at Kempsville Elementary, a son in 5th grade and a daughter in 3rd grade. They've both attended since kindergarten. On Halloween, as we were trick-or-treating in the neighborhood, I had the opportunity to speak to a few of our neighbors from both sides of the neighborhood, and they all expressed the same desire that I have, to keep our kids at Kempsville Elementary School. So I hope that I can represent my family and my neighbors tonight. We have many reasons as a family and as a neighborhood why we would like to keep our children at Kempsville until they go to middle school, many of which are emotional and existentially important to our families. I understand that the board cannot necessarily take those into account. There are also, however, logistical reasons why it's important that we stay at Kempsville. Kempsville Heights is split down the middle by Wichita Road. My family lives on the west side of Wichita, the side geographically closer to Point of View. As the crow flies, it appears from looking at a street map that we are closer to POV. However, in terms of driving distance, Kempsville Elementary is closer by half the distance from our home than Point of View. For some families on the east side of the neighborhood, the distance from home to school is nearly tripled when driving to POV versus the current distance to Kempsville. Moreover, we learned from attending the informational meeting at POV that the reason for the rezoning is due to overcrowding at Point of View. Our neighborhood, according to the most recent numbers, and I believe those are last year's numbers, has only 37 elementary-age children, several of whom aged out last year or will go to middle school next year, my son among them. With such a small number of students and minimal impacts to the overall enrollment at Kempsville, we ask that the board reconsider moving Kempsville Heights and keep us zoned for KES. We do realize as a community that it may not be possible to avoid rezoning Kempsville Heights as much as it is our deepest desire to do so. If the board is unwilling to reconsider that portion of the rezoning proposal, then we ask that our children, who are current students at Kempsville, be granted waivers to stay at KES through 5th grade. I realize that we would likely have to provide our own transportation to and from school, and we'll figure that out. I've already told a friend in my neighborhood, whose youngest son is also in 3rd grade, that I would be willing to take her son to school and pick him up. We can arrange car pools if necessary. My daughter will face a huge transition in just a couple of short years. If this proposal is passed, we have no choice but to send her to POV. She would endure two major transitions in two years. I ask for your consideration to allow her and our other neighborhood children to stay at their current school.
Okay, Madam Chair. We will move on to our Public Comment section. Our first speaker will be Heather Sype. Speaker two had to cancel. We'll go to Diane Muskeback, and then Amanda Kimball.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Sype, and I am the President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here this evening to speak about the school calendar. I would like to thank you for your decision at the last meeting acknowledging that Election Day should be a flexible staff day. I would also like to thank you for your willingness to consider making the last Thursday of the school year an adjusted dismissal day for all students. There are many factors to consider, and later this evening you'll be given a report from docile on some of these factors. I would like you to also consider the human factor. All VBCAPS employees are people first, many with children and families of their own. They deserve to work in a division that prioritizes their ability to complete work-related tasks during the contract date. I am a mother of two boys, whom I raised on my own, and a 23-year teacher here in Virginia Beach. I also have four stepchildren who now bless my life. I understand the challenges of making arrangements for my children when I head to work. I understand the challenges of making arrangements for my children when I had to work and they did not have school. I also know all too well the struggle of not having enough of myself left over for my children at the end of the day because I'd given every ounce of myself to my students and still had to bring homework because there's simply not enough time in the contract day to get it all done. During my twenty-three years in the classroom, I taught at both the middle and high school levels. About half of that time was as an itinerant teacher, meaning that my time was split between multiple schools each year. As part of this, I would have to complete many things, including the end of year checklist for each of my schools. At the end of the year, when my sites were all high school, I had time to complete these tasks on contract. When I had middle school sites as part of this process, I did not. And our elementary colleagues are affected the same as middle school. The ask here is for two and a half hours. This is just a drop in the bucket towards equitable time for elementary and middle schools, but it's a start. Additionally, we'd like you to consider an adjusted dismissal day for students on Friday, March fifth, twenty twenty-seven. There are high school staff with a new group of students for term two and semester two and middle school staff with new students for semester two and the nine weeks quarter three. This is the first report card for term two students and the first progress report for semester two and quarter three students. There is a staff day in the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, but there is no time built into the third quarter of the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar. Staff need time here to process grades. We recognize a full staff day is not possible while adhering to the hundred and eighty-day requirement, but an adjusted dismissal day for students is possible. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Diane Muskeback, then Amanda Kimball, then Paula Chang.
Good evening. Have you heard? God is back. There are more states pushing to include chaplains in public schools. In addition to Florida, Louisiana, and Texas, seventeen other states are involved in chaplain legislation, with Virginia among those committed to file and communicating interest in incorporating chaplains into our public schools. According to the American School Counselor Association, the disparity for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year came in at a ratio of three hundred and eighty-five students to one counselor. The recommended number is two fifty to one. Rocky Malloy, the CEO of National School Chaplain's Association, said he cannot overemphasize the great need for school chaplains. I'd like to read to you an excerpt from the National School Chaplaincy Association newsletter. The title is "A Calm Campus: How School Chaplains Promote Peace and Well-Being." Schools across the nation have faced a surge in stress, anxiety, and even violence. According to the American Psychological Association, incidents of violence and aggression towards educators and the violence among students significantly increased post-pandemic. This alarming trend not only disrupts the learning environment, but also adds immense pressure on both students and staff. Schools are now seeking innovative ways to restore peace and promote well-being within their communities and chaplains offer a valuable solution. School chaplains play a crucial role in supporting the emotional and mental health of students, teachers, and staff. While their training and spiritual care and emotional support, chaplains are skilled at reducing stress and alleviating anxiety. Their presence provides a calming influence, helping students navigate challenges, build resilience, and develop healthy coping skills by creating safe spaces for open conversations. Chaplains can help students express their feelings in non-destructive ways, ultimately diffusing tension before it escalates into conflict and diffusing school mass shootings before they even happen. Violence is, you know, I have to comment on the awards tonight, that they were so wonderful. And, you know, they were just fabulous and the people that got them and from the schools that they came from. But there are some children that are being left behind and violence is happening right in our backyard. I know of instances in the past where four, four schools, namely Green Run High School, Parkway Elementary, Larkspur Middle School, and Bayside High School, where students have not been disciplined when cursing at teachers. What does this, what does this teach young students in their formative years going into the world as adults? And how do these moments incentivize students, teachers to want to keep teaching? Let's come together, care about these children's future, and work to make a positive peaceful impact, starting at a young age. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Kimball and then Paula Chang.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the school board and Dr. Robertson. My name is Mandy Kimball and I'm a kindergarten teacher and VBEA school representative at Woodstock Elementary. I'm also a parent to a junior and an eighth grader. I would like to talk tonight about the calendars being proposed for adoption. At the last school board meeting, I talked about my concerns with the continuation of elementary and middle schools not being included with the high school early release days. The inequity for us educators between the educational levels is glaring on so many fronts. The amount of work that has been added on to our elementary school educators this year is insurmountable. We have very little planning time, especially when compared to our middle and high school counterparts. Not being included with the early release days is another example of the inequities elementary school educators face in Virginia Beach. Giving elementary and middle school educators the proper time to close out their school year is necessary and needed. As a reminder, our end-of-the-year checkout packet is nine pages long. And that's not including teachers who have to pack up their rooms due to grade level changes, moving to different rooms or schools being repainted and need to completely pack up their rooms. As a member of the VBA board, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to collaborate and meet with other educators from all over the state and the country. Virginia Beach does a lot of things right, but listening to the needs of the teachers is not one of them. We are the ones in the classroom every day making relationships and in the trenches dealing with a variety of needs our students have. We are the ones who spend all day making our students' learning environment safe and engaging. We are the ones our students are excited to see at the start of the day. We are the ones staying late, planning, and making authentic learning experiences. I have seen my colleagues put their students over their own needs time and time again. I am proud of the work my colleagues do and my own children have benefited from having fabulous teachers in Virginia Beach. At the very least, please consider giving elementary and middle school educators an early release the last Thursday before the end of school. But I challenge you to please start listening to us educators. I'm tired of the same, well, that's the way we've always done thing mentality. What are other districts doing to ease inequities between elementary, middle, and high school educators, especially regarding planning time? How are other places incorporating the challenges of expedited SOL testing and graduation plans without having clear inequity among the grade levels? Please consider thinking outside the box when addressing these and other issues and please consider making this amendment to the calendar and allowing elementary and middle school educators early release along with the high schools. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Kendrick and your time on the board is greatly appreciated. Then I'm going to ask a question. What do universities have in common with some of this school board's history? That would be that they push political indoctrination over education. So beware tuition-paying parents as university students learned last week that their traumatized election feelings warrant cocoa, coloring books, and Legos. Universities now weaken and indoctrinate, not always educate, students. So think of Virginia Beach students who disliked Youngkin's model policies. So these students assisted by politically motivated school board members often chaotically hijack these meetings. They were taught that their feelings trump fact and it doesn't. An entrenched political bureaucracy flowing from the top down of the quote-unquote Department of Education and the National Education Association orchestrates all this. They send marching orders to the media and the Virginia and Virginia Beach Education Association. Leadership and members understand the messages and the buzzwords and the phrases to use. For example, following the election, VEA members, and I'm going to assume some of you are Ms. Melnick, Anderson, Riggs, and Ms. Felton, who's coming back in, received a battle plan in the form of a message of concern from VEA President Carolyn Bauer to pass on to the schools following, to pass on in the schools following the elections. Listen carefully because we may have heard some of this in the media. Some of the things she says in here are, "I know that today feels like a dark day for many of you." You will need time to express feelings, be it shock, anger, uncertainty, or fear. Our union will come under attack as never before. Think collective bargaining. The VEA will be here with resources, training, and advocacy initiatives, and we will be leveraging the vast experience and support of the NEA to get us there. Think money and think of the fact that the VEA gave two hundred and twelve thousand dollars to Democratic candidates and zero to Republicans. It's a political organization. It is signed by Bauer with the phrase "in solidarity." So if a VBEA rep stands up here to speak, they have received their orders and you must always ask if they're following them. And this, I will say this document does not discuss education at all, just politics. So will this board continue to politically indoctrinate rather than to teach critical thinking? And Dr. Robertson, respectfully, you are to run your office with political impartiality in the planning for the future of our students. Thus, I have a question for you, sir. The VBEA is behaving as a political and not an educational organization, as you're seeing here. So why, given this document, is the immediate past president of the VBEA on the compass to twenty twenty, to twenty thirty committee? Why is she having input into assessments and plans? Why does the VBA carry such weight in planning the development of our children when fewer than nine percent of the teachers even desire membership? And why does this board and administration allow coordinated national politics to so greatly affect educational objectives the parents and taxpayers expect for their students? Thank you. And again, thank you, Ms. Kendrick.
Madam Chair, that was the last speaker for this evening.
Thank you. And before we move on to information, I just would like to say thank you to the Young Boy Scout in the audience. Thank you for joining us to watch your city government at work and we're happy that you chose the school board. So, thank you. All right. So tonight we start with Mrs. Lanetti and our policy review committee's recommendations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair of School Board Members and Dr. Robertson. I'm Camille Lanetti, the School Board Attorney, and I'm here on behalf of the Policy Review Committee to bring you recommendations of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. There are twelve recommendations and three of them are bylaw recommendations that are somewhat related. Starting with Bylaw one twenty-five, which is public complaints and procedures, you'll see we'll come to Bylaw one twenty-eight, but we are going to be removing the reference in Bylaw one twenty-five in Section B under complaints. There's a reference to the second line that has to do with the governance committee's responsibilities as we'll be moving in Bylaw one twenty-eight to remove the governance committee. We therefore are going to recommend removing the reference to the governance committee in Bylaw one twenty-five. Are there any questions about Bylaw one twenty-five? Hearing no questions on Bylaw one twenty-five, we'll move on to Bylaw one twenty-eight. Bylaw one twenty-eight is committees, organizations, boards, and school board members sign it, so in there. The recommendations come down to PRC to remove the governance committee, which is one of the standing committees under this bylaw. That comes in under Section C and the recommendation is to pull out the entire governance committee. To do this, we would need to amend Section C to pull out C three and then renumber the rest of Section C to reflect that. There are a couple of scrivenor changes after that. But that would be the recommendation coming out of the PRC again is to remove the governance committee from the bylaws. Are there any questions about Bylaw one twenty-eight? Hearing no questions about Bylaw twenty-eight, one twenty-eight, we would move on then to Bylaw one thirty-three. Bylaw one thirty-three is formulation approval, revision, and rescission of regulations. We would be moving to amend A. We're going to actually format that, add some section numbers to that. And then we would then take out under Section Three, the additional paragraph. And then of importance, the PRC spent some time discussing how to do regulations. And so under Section B, which is review, it will now read the school board reserves the right to review, comma, approve, comma, amend, and veto regulations should they, in the school board's judgment, be inconsistent or absent from policies adopted by the school board. And that would be the recommendations to amend Bylaw one thirty-three. Are there any questions about Bylaw one thirty-three?
Ms. Anderson.
So I'd like to know what precipitated this particular move in adding the, the idea that the school board is basically taking over the superintendent's job here. It's the superintendent's job to do the regulations. Yes, we've always had the right to ask about it, to discuss it, to recommend to the superintendent. But in, in essence, it's, it's the superintendent's right to have this responsibility, not the school board's right. Even though the school board can ask the superintendent to change certain regulations. So I'd like to know what precipitated this particular change. Can anyone answer that?
I'll let the chair, the PRC, Mrs. Brown, address that.
Sure, thank you. It was brought to my attention that Code twenty-two point one dash seven eight as amended states that a board may adopt bylaws and regulations, not inconsistent with state statutes and regulations of the Board of Education. And I'm not going to read the rest of it, but our bylaw is inconsistent with the state law that we may do so. It's not that we would be doing every regulation, but it gives us the opportunity to as the state law provides.
Could you maybe cite an example? That's always easier for people to understand.
Sure. Most recently, we had a regulation on dual enrollment courses and we had the regulation going through. We discussed it. We couldn't vote on the regulation. We brought the policy forward to the committee. It was redundant and it wasn't a necessary maneuver, so. That's, that's what prompted it. And Ms. Manning?
Yeah, and so I had request that we look at this because of, of kind of some disagreement on this, whether or not the board could vote on regulations. And the way that our bylaws are written, it says that we can only approve regulations, basically if the superintendent requests us to do so, which is counter to state law. So that's why we felt that it needed to be changed because it's contrary to state law. And, and if I just may clarify, these changes don't say that we will vote on regulations. It just gives us the right to do so if we believe that we should.
So my question is, in the past, with the example that you used, were changes made to those regulations to meet our, to meet our request?
I know there have been examples of that. It doesn't happen very often. Quite as I said at the top, I can't remember. It's happened two or three times in the twenty years that I've been with the board.
Every superintendent that I've ever worked for tries to please the board. I mean, obviously, because the superintendent works for the board. So if there are regulations there that the board doesn't feel are accurate or meet the needs of, for whatever reason, most of the superintendents that I've worked with have been happy to make those changes or to make changes that at least agree with the, the thought or the, the philosophy that the board wants. So I just, I feel like this is a slam and a way to, it's just a way to show the superintendent that the board has the power and the superintendent knows that the board has the ultimate power, but I just, this is just one of those slapping faces that, that is not necessary at this time.
Okay, well, at this point, I turn to the third member of the Policy Review Committee, Ms. Owens.
Sure, thank you. And this was, you know, discussion that we had in the committee. I'm trying to think of the example. There has been at least one time since I've been on the board where the board requested to vote and be a part of a regulation. Basically, I can't remember which one it was, but we were telling Dr. Robertson, this one's kind of controversial and it shouldn't land solely on your, your shoulders. As a board, we want to hold the responsibility of, I don't remember what controversial one that was that we were doing that day. I think it is rare. I think the, you can't argue that the state statute does allow for that flexibility there. I, I would hope, I won't be on the board, but I would hope that the board would continue to use that authority very judiciously and not be looking for extra work to do. I don't think anybody is looking to necessarily be here longer, but there are, there are some times when it happens and so I, I felt it was appropriate to make sure that the, the match from our policy to the code section. So that's, that's why I also voted yes for it in the committee.
So that's always a gut check for me when it comes out unanimous from, I'm not giving my opinion, but I'm just saying when all three members are unanimous about something, I, that's, that's a checked box for me. Does anybody else have a comment before we move on? I think I see something yellow under there, but I can't. Oh, it's still Ms. Owens. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Lanetti.
Moving on to policies, on policy two, this is superintendent evaluation. We are looking, we just amended- We are looking, we just amended this in twenty twenty-three. However, this particular policy on the second sentence had referred to the Governance Committee's responsibility in the superintendent evaluation process. Again, because you'd be amending Bylaw one twenty-eight, you would no longer need this particular section, that the entire board would take responsibility for the evaluation process. So we recommend striking out that second sentence. Are there questions on Policy two-nine? Hearing no questions on Policy two-nine, we'll move on to Policy three sixty-one. Three sixty-one's under our General Business Section. This has to do with tobacco, nicotine vapor, alternative nicotine products prohibited. We actually spent a lot of time on this particular, we had amended it in twenty nineteen to address some of the state law. But one of the issues that came up for us is although we were taking out alternative nicotine, which we were thinking vaping products, and it was brought up, I believe Ms. Owens brought it to our attention, well, those students who may be trying to do nicotine cessation, so they're doing a patch, they're trying to do something else, would they then be prohibited from using those items to prevent themselves from having the need to address nicotine products or tobacco during the day? We actually sent it back, brought in Ms. Suwala, our head nurse, on there to talk about it. And after some discussion about it, we decided to make sure we're accurately capturing this. So we're going to add a sentence that will read, "Use of alternative nicotine products during school hours at school-sponsored events requires completion of a medication order with the school nurse." It is still medication, according to Ms. Suwala, and like any other medication, even Tylenol, if you have it at school, it needs to be brought to the school's attention, so where, what you have on you and why you're using it. So we think that with a couple of other minor scrivenor changes, that accurately reflects that. Now allows those students who might be trying to go through treatment processes to avoid nicotine and tobacco to continue to use those products during the school days. So that is the recommendation for Policy three sixty-one. Are there any questions on Policy three sixty-one? Moving on to Policy seven-one, this is under our Community Relations Section. This has to do with relations with the public. There are no significant changes in this. You'll see down in Section D, we have formatted it, and also because it was time to change the name to the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, we've done it a couple of times, the last couple of meetings. So that's just a correction in Section D and the formatting. Those would be the only recommendations for Policy seven-one. Are there any questions about seven-one? Moving on to Policy seven-six, again, dealing with news media. This is relations with the news media, and there is just a review, because this was the five-year time period. We lost it in two thousand nineteen, and just a minor scrivenor changes throughout there, but no other significant changes. Are there any questions on seven-six, relation with the news media? If no questions on seven-six, we'll move on to seven-ten. Again, dealing with communications with the public. The recommendations are to remove the editor's note, which we consistently be doing. The last time this policy review was in two thousand nineteen, so this is a five-year check for this particular policy. Are there any questions about Policy seven-ten? Hearing no questions on seven-ten, we'll move on to seven-fifteen. This is distribution announcements from outside council. Again, a policy that we last looked at in two thousand nineteen. We're changing the name of the departments, most in Section C. I think there's one scrivenor change, but other than that, there are no other recommendations other than the change of the department name. Any further questions on seven-fifteen? Hearing no questions on seven-fifteen, we'll move on to seven-eighteen. Also dealing with community engagement, volunteers, and partnerships. You will see again in C two that there's a correction of the department name and removal of the editor's notes. So basically, scrivenor changes to account for that. And again, this is a policy we last looked at in two thousand nineteen. Are there any questions on seven-eighteen? Hearing no questions on seven-eighteen, we will then move on to seven-thirty-one. This is Parent Teacher Association, last looked at in two thousand nineteen. Were no recommended changes, so this would be simply the five-year review for seven-thirty-one, which is Parent Teacher Association. So are there any questions? Hearing no questions, I'll move on to our last one, which is seven-thirty-two, which is gifts and grants. We would be formatting this one, you'll see us doing that a lot of the policies, getting them consistent. So just some formatting changes, other than that, there are no significant changes to this policy. Are there any questions on the recommended amendments for seven-thirty-two? All right, that would bring the end of our recommendations, and I will remind you that we will not be having our Policy Review Committee meeting this week. We have moved it to next week to accommodate some schedules. So this is off week for us, it'll be next Thursday we'll be having our meeting.
Okay, so for the record, Policy Review next Thursday. Okay, the twenty-first, okay. At one o'clock, thank you. All right. Item B is the Building Utilization Committee, and we welcome Mr. Ronald Burke-Bial, demographer and GIS manager. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board, Ms. Robertson. Good to see everyone again. In accordance with Policy five fourteen, the rezoning team has completed its community input task, received surveys, analyzed them, and shared them with the BUC. This presentation is designed to inform the entire school board of the survey results. I'd like to just do a quick review of where we're at with the proposed rezoning. First off, we have the colored sections that represent the areas that would be newly redesigned. The pink area here is for Arrowhead. The yellow area or orange area is for the Point of View. The purple area is for Kempsville, and then the blue area is for Pembroke. You'll notice that there are hatched areas within the zones. Those hatched areas are the proposed changes that would take place in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, if so, if the school board should be so moved. For the Arrowhead area, fourteen students would move from what was once Point of View to Arrowhead. Area B, forty students would move from what was once Arrowhead to Point of View. Area C, thirty-seven students would move from what was once Kempsville to Point of View. And Area D, one hundred ninety-seven students would move from Area D to Kempsville. And lastly, Area E would have no existing students moved, but would have new construction moved into their particular area. The blue polygons represent the new developments. This one in Area E is for one twenty-two Mack Street. They've done groundwork there. Area, the artistry of Greenwich Apartments is an area that would, is projected to have thirty-five students. They have lumber on the site, and all the infrastructure is in underground. And then we have a very small development here, which is Hunt Club Condo, which would generate two students. They would remain with the Point of View Elementary School. For the middle schools, we have same kind of setup here. We have, let me turn this around. We have the hatched area, which is once Larkspur Middle School. Eighteen students would be moving from that area to Independence Middle School. And then one hundred and twenty-three students from Larkspur would be moving from Larkspur to Kempsville Middle School. The proposed rezoning accommodates School Board Policy five fourteen requirements. It optimizes facility space, brings neighborhoods back together, accommodates new construction, minimizes student and zonal impacts, unifies feeder zones, neutralizes transportation demand, introduces a long-term solution, and enhances the student's educational experience. With gratitude, Mr. DeLucy engineered and executed a very robust community outreach program. More than sixteen thousand forms of communication were distributed. Eighty-four hundred were in emails that were transmitted. Fifty-five hundred were through Parent Square notifications, and twenty-two hundred were sent by carrier mail letters. In addition, social media notifications were crafted and sent. Between September twenty-fifth and October ninth, surveys were made available and announced to the public. The survey was offered in fifteen different languages. During the survey period, two public meetings were conducted. The Larkspur Middle School meeting attracted seven parents. The Point of View Elementary School meeting attracted twenty parents. Overall, the sixteen thousand forms of communication generated one hundred and thirty-seven, one hundred and thirty-seven surveys. Of the one hundred and thirty-seven surveys, forty-one or thirty percent offered demographic information only, such as name, gender, race, ethnicity, et cetera. Ninety-six surveys offered survey question responses and/or comments. Of the two hundred and eighty-eight elementary school parents impacted, twenty-nine or ten percent completed a survey. Less than one-tenth of one percent, seventeen parents unaffected by the rezoning responded. When I mention unaffected, it means that they were within the zone, but they weren't in the affected areas. Of the one hundred and forty-one middle school parents impacted, five percent or seven parents completed a survey. Now granted, this table has a lot of detailed survey information, so I'll just offer an overview. In the left column, you'll see the rezoning areas are identified. The most numerous surveys from an affected change came from Area C and is identified in the second column. Three areas offered no responses. Those were Areas A, E, and Double A. The number of impacted students are identified in the first green column. Area D would impact one hundred and ninety-seven elementary school students. Area Double B would impact one hundred and twenty-three middle school students, sorry, one hundred and ninety-seven elementary school students for Area D, and Double B would be one hundred and twenty-three for middle school. In the second green column, Area D had a four percent response rate, and Area Double B had a six percent response rate. Based on the number of impacted students, the total number of elementary school responses were twenty-one percent. Area C had the highest response rate of thirty-five percent, which represented thirteen surveys. The response rate for middle schools was five percent. When the total number of surveys to residential units is calculated, the elementary school response rate was one percent. Middle school to residential unit ratio was less than one percent. These calculations are in the blue area of the table. The rate is based upon impacted students plus unaffected students. We received twenty-four surveys from staff. This represented three percent of all staff affected in the rezoned areas. Benchmarking other county surveys, three questions had commonality and were used. The first question was, "As you plan for the upcoming proposed rezoning, what is your primary concern?" Of the ninety-six completed surveys, the top responses were overcrowding, students losing friends, lost relationships with staff, insufficient disability services and resources, and purchased homes to be in specific school zones. The second question was, "As you place, as you plan for the upcoming proposed rezoning, what do you see as potential benefits?" Fifty-seven parents said, "No benefits offered, overcrowding resolved, availability of additional academic and extracurricular activities, and reduced class sizes." The third question was, "As you plan for the upcoming proposed rezoning, how can Virginia Beach City Public Schools help you or your student prepare for this change?" Forty-seven parents said, "Reject the zoning, clearly communicate the changes, ensure schools have resources and staff." The staff responses had some similarities, but weighed more heavily on class and student management. Based upon Policy five fourteen factors for rezoning and membership, respondents were asked to identify the top three factors to consider. The top choices were student educational experience, both the parent and staff was the parent and staff's top choice, rezoning a minimum number of schools and students. Parents felt this was the second factor, and long-term solutions. This was the third highest factor for parents and second highest for staff. For your information, the citizen column represents respondents with no children in a zone. Based upon the top three factors, the BUC felt these top three factors were achieved with the proposed rezoning proposal. Student educational experience, long-term solutions, and rezoning as few students as possible. To close the presentation, the final step is on December tenth with school board action. To date, staff is present at the School Board Workshop. The website is still live with FAQs. Surveys have been gathered, they have been analyzed, the BUC has received the survey analysis, and tonight, the school board received the BUC information. The rezoning team is prepared to answer any questions if needed. Dr. Jenneke will answer survey instrument questions. Mr. Sayok can answer geospatial questions. Mr. Freeman, policy questions, and Ms. Ingram, facility questions. We're prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, then we'll begin with Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you for presentation tonight. We have heard from a couple of the community members that will be impacted. And I have heard a lot from different community members as well, who did not speak tonight. And one of the questions that perhaps you could just address for us is, how many different proposals, rezoning proposals, were there as the BUC committee was going through, you know, all of the machinations of how we got to tonight? So were there different proposals, or did you all just kind of work through the, you know, the numbers, the schools, the future building, and then just come to one proposal?
Yes, so we began working on this last January, so we've been working on it for about eleven months. We actually came up with nine proposals. And what we did is we whittled them down to the three most relevant ones that were associated. Some of them didn't work, some of them weren't balancing the zones, and so those were easy to throw out.
Okay, so I think that at least this particular constituent is a little frustrated that we only got to see one proposal and not had a choice of maybe two, two or three proposals. So just to put that out there. And I guess I have actually driven from Kempsville Heights to Kempsville Elementary, and then also to Point of View. Now, again, as I think one of the speakers tonight said this, as the bird flies, as the crow flies, it does seem like Point of View would be closer, okay? But having driven both directions from that area, you literally take a right out of the neighborhood, get onto Kempsville Road, and then left into the school as opposed to having to, and I, Mr. Freeman, thank you, as opposed to having to leave that neighborhood, turn on to Princess Anne Road, turn right on to Parliament, I think it is, and then take, you know, kind of veer around and go through a whole other neighborhood. So although it seems like it should be an equal distance, it actually does create a little bit of a time concern when you have to go through a whole other neighborhood that has, you know, buses and different reasons that, you know, could provide additional delays. And some of these, parents again, have, you know, one to two, three students. So I guess my question to you, and I would very much like for you to address this tonight for some of these community members that are asking these questions. You know, why is it that we're going from an overcrowded school and we are taking from undercrowded schools just to, so to speak, even out the borders? You know, you're going from a school that has, you know, fewer students and sending them to a school that we're trying to address the overcrowding? So if we could address that, please.
Sounds good. So there were a couple of different questions. The reason I stepped in is because it's transportation-related, so if we're not going to put our demographer in that position, so I'll start with that one, and then I'll probably lead into the other one, and then maybe bring in Mr. Burke-Bial. So as you look at the map here, you're referring to Area C related to the transportation piece.
Yes.
And you talked about as the crow flies and as you drove your car. So Point of View here, here's Area C. You can see all of the area out here for others that have to travel two to three times as far as that area. We have six buses right now that transport students from this area to Point of View. Those six buses drive right down Witch Duck Road, right down the middle of Area C. So for those students, it's the same bus stop, and we would absorb those students on the six buses that already travel. And this plan would then not require a bus to go pick up those students, which they currently have to be able to take them to Kempsville Middle School. So from a transportation, we provide transportation, those students will go to the same bus stop. I know that that wasn't the question you asked, it was a parent wanting to drive their student. I know that that wasn't the question you asked, it was a, a parent wanting to drive their student and what the impact was on that parent because they were making a choice to drive their child rather than send them to the bus stop. We provide the transportation. It's the same bus stop that will provide them. And that's a pretty short distance to be able to get from that zone, uh, to the other piece. So that's the transportation piece, and then the, the other piece that you talked about, that I'll bring Mr. Burkabow back in is, so when we address these, you saw the number of things that the policy asks us to look at. It's not just asking you to just go in and just fix the number, uh, and make the number work for that school. There are a lot of things that we've been talking about related to odd shapes of different parts of the city and zones in the city. So when we go in and we touch something, we want to make sure that we have a balanced approach and accomplish everything that we want to, and that's the slide that, uh, Mr. Burkabow shared earlier. So there were a number of elements that were included in, uh, correct, you know, to balance these out. And most substantial piece is this is a good long-term solution. This solution, when put in place, will not have to be touched for many years, and we would monitor it over time. Mr. Burkabow, do you have anything to add to that piece?
So just to make sure everyone understands, our primary concern here was the overcrowding. We needed to do something about that. It wasn't shaping the, the zone. But one of the policy five fourteen initiatives that is asked for us to look at is neighborhoods. And what we had was a neighborhood that was literally across the street from Point of View but going to Arrowhead. So that's kind of the reverse situation that, uh, you're referring to with transportation. And, you know, there's things that can be done if they want to walk, you know, they, we could go through the process of doing a non-transportation zone. But everything, everything in this area that we're talking about is transport, uh, has transport.
Okay, um, and I, and I will yield, but I do have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Dr. Robertson or, or who. But, um, if a child has an IEP, um, are, are they provided, um, any consideration through the IEP?
Yeah, so only if the IEP, um, required a program that's only offered at the current school, which I don't believe. Melanie, did any of those schools have specialty programs? Okay, yeah. So if they did have a special program, the IEP would supersede the needs move.
Okay, okay. And I'm going to yield for now and possibly come back. Thank you.
Sam Anderson.
So just to be clear, we had a parent that was concerned because she had a special ed student who was cor- who was currently going to Arrowhead. So it sounds like that student won't be affected. Is that correct?
I don't know what's that, the, is in that student's IEP. But if the student was receiving services at any particular school, and our proposed move would put them in a school where those services were not offered, we would not push that kid to a school where they don't have those services offered.
And my next question is, um, okay, so basically, what, this whole thing, this whole scenario is going to alleviate, I don't know exactly, I don't see, I didn't, I didn't add it up, but Point of View is going to lose a significant amount of students, correct?
That, that is correct.
Do you have that number?
Yes, so if you just look at the, the sum of the movements here, you're going to see that a hundred and ninety-seven students will go to Kempsville, whereas they're giving back thirty-seven and forty here. But they're also losing in area A fourteen. So we're, we're expecting them to be around the five percent, uh, capacity range, which is, which is really good compared to where they've been.
So when a school loses that many students, that means that, I mean, it, just for the services that are rendered to the students, the number of teachers involved, et cetera, um, you know, they're going to be gaining students, but they're going to be losing a significant amount, and what's, so what's going to happen is the whole scenario of that school, the whole makeup of that school is going to be completely different for the number of students that are coming in and just the number of students that are attending that zone. I, I don't think it's fair to say that, that their scores after this is done, that their scores are going to be relevant to what they are now. Because they're going to be losing so many students but gaining students. So it's, it's like all, a whole huge neighborhood that's moving into that school that may change the scores of, you know, how they, when they test out. So I, I, I don't think you can use the, the, um, the current, um, scores. You just can't do that because it's like a whole new school, a whole new area that's coming in and out.
That sound logic in my opinion.
I know, I just want, I just wanted to, want to speak to that. Okay, I think, uh, that was it.
All right, Ms. Brown?
Okay. Um, so if you could, um, refresh me on a part because you went through it and it's not here in the, um, the handout, um, what area did you say had expressed the most concerns? Like if you could point on that map?
The peninsula area from Kempsville.
All right, that, that area C, and how many, um, how many students are going from there?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, okay. All right. Um, and then could you also refresh my memory what the current capacity is of Point of View?
Point of View is currently at around seven percent.
Seven percent overcapacity?
Right.
Okay.
With the new developments coming.
Right, and it's projected to continue to increase. And we, we start to look at them at five percent overcapacity, correct?
Well, we've been monitoring Point of View for about five years now. And, uh, we've noticed that they kept, kept climbing, climbing, climbing. And so, you know, it's kind of like a process that we go through. Wh- when, when, uh, Ms. Ingram noticed this way before I got here, she, uh, they immediately with Mr. Arnold put, um, portables in to accommodate the, the students, um, that were there. But, you know, when you look at the school itself, they, and the programs they have in it, they have no extra programs because they've got so many students. So, you know, things, simple things like calming rooms are just not available.
Right. Okay, and, um, I think I already know the answer to this, but I, I do want to make sure that I, you know, thoroughly, uh, cover some of the concerns and considerations that were, um, brought forward. Um, what is the possibility of doing some sort of waiver if the parent provides transportation until their student moves to the different school? Is that feasible?
Yeah, so we have, in policy right now, if, at, at elementary school, if a student is going into the fifth grade and a rezoning has affected that student, and they've been in the school in the fourth grade and prior to, they can put in an out-of-zone request to remain in their school for fifth grade. And so that's in place right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Weems.
Thank you. Yes, that was one of my questions, and that's what I thought, a fifth grade waiver. Feeder zones, I think those are very, very important when I, in fact, when people move into the area. I say, look at the feeder zone, all three levels. Because my particular elementary school that my kids went to, only ten percent went to the middle schools that they didn't know, and everybody else went somewhere else, and then about ten percent, they went to another high school and everybody went somewhere else. So in that area, the feeder zones don't line up too well. How do the feeder zones line up with your changes here?
Well, they line up pretty good, uh, as far as the middle school goes. We didn't do any realignment with the high schools by request. But if you, when you look at the map for the middle school. Turn this around. The, the feeder zones, ideally what you want to do is have the elementary school zones that feed into the middle school zones to overlap perfectly. And they do here in this particular instance.
Perfect. And then what high schools do, does this whole area go to?
You have some that go to Bayside High School, and you have some to go to Kempsville High School.
Okay, so it's still just two high schools. Okay, that's very good. All right, um, and then why, are we voting on this November twenty-sixth or December tenth?
December tenth.
And why are we skipping a meeting? Why, why are we not voting on it the twenty-sixth? Is there? Because we usually do information, is there, do y'all have another meeting or?
For Mr. Burkabow.
So the stated goal date to be able to have a decision from the board was by the tenth.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The stated goal date to have a decision by the board was by the tenth. To enable staff to be able to make all the changes. The fact that we were here a little bit early to give you the information.
Okay, so you're just early, so if we want to change that, we could, we could, okay. Okay, thank you. I just want to, I've been on the BUC committee several times. And it's just such hard work, and it's very impressive that y'all had nine different, um, scenarios that you went through. We appreciate that. And to the general public, and I'm the same way, when sometimes you look at maps, you think, how did they come to that line? Did it just a three-year-old color it with a crayon? Because some of them are just crazy, but there's so much that goes into it, like water. You know, water really messes up the lines around First Colonial and Cox High School and all that, and then neighborhoods splitting, and major, you know, North Hampton, Independence Boulevard, and all that. There's so many, um, things that go into that. So I know it's hard, hard work, and if anything that we do, minus the last two years, let's not count the last two years. But before the last two years, anything that we discuss as a board, this is probably the most difficult because parents do, they buy houses thinking they're going to go to a certain school or, um, and they, they have neighborhoods and everything, so it's very, I understand how hard it is on the parent. But I do think after the numbers, um, with the take and give, Point of View is basically losing a hundred and forty students. That's twenty-five per grade. That is significant, and that's the reason why we do this, is because we can't. The worst thing in my opinion is to have an overcrowded school because then you have overcrowded classrooms. That's not good for the student, nor is it good for the teacher. So, um, so, so this to me has met its goal. Does it make everybody happy? Of course not. But, um, it's meeting our goal, and I appreciate the work that the committee members did. Thank you.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Uh, I want to echo the thanks to the committee for the work. It's never, uh, it's never easy work, and there's always going to be some, some people upset, and rightly so. Change is hard, and nobody wants to be in that, uh, change realm. I do have, uh, two questions. One might be more for admin. When I saw this, I knew the policy piece about the fifth graders and eighth graders, or upcoming fifth and eighth graders being able to do the waiver. Does that extend to siblings that are also in the, in the same school? Or would the parent have to commit to a fifth grader at one school and a third grader at a different school?
Yeah, so again, we want to make sure in our current policy, let's say your child is a, you have a child in third grade and fourth grade this year. And your fourth grader decides that they want to stay in the home school. They, they put in for the out-of-zone waiver, which is a reason for approval. And then the parent would say, well, I want my siblings to stay together. And transporting two is as easy as transporting one. We would grant that waiver for that sibling as well. The issue becomes
The next year.
The next year. So if you, in the case of a current third and fourth grader, the fourth grader would be the most significant decision because that's a yes, they're going to fifth grade, which would then get the fourth grader approved. But if it was a second and fourth grader, then next year the fourth grader's in fifth grade, the second grader's in third grade, there is no waiver for third grade. That, then after that one year, they would end up going to the new school zone.
Okay, and that's kind of what I was expecting, but I wanted to make sure that that was kind of out there so that parents could consider all of those different factors. The other factor that I'm sure I would struggle with as a parent is making sure, my child was doing well at the school that they were in and wanted to stay there the following year. Am I setting them up to be in the same feeder pattern for middle school? Or am I setting them up to be in a situation where they go into the sixth grade and don't know anybody because I kept them in the, the school that they were comfortable with? And so it, no right answers, I'm sure. It's going to be individual, but those are certainly considerations. The other question I have, and I don't know if you have the, uh, answer now, and it's probably, uh, easier as an email if you can get the information. I always kind of like to consider, am I voting for zoning policies or whatever that may disproportionately impact historically disadvantaged communities? But I don't know unless I'm asking. And so is there a way that we could, um, get information about the demographics by ratio? Racial and, uh, special education like we have for all of our categories? Um, that compares the hatches that are being impacted to the, uh, schools that they are currently in? To see, uh, are we seeing similar demographics? Or is there some disproportionality about, from the hatches that have been chosen?
I would ask, what type of demographics are you looking for? Because that's a, that's a pretty broad term. So if you would like to share that with us, I'm sure we can gather that information for you.
Sure, just, uh, by race and special education. And, uh, uh, I think usually we have a category for, uh, socio-economic classifications to just have the comparison to what we usually look like, look at at the breakdowns in our schools.
I think we can get back with you on that.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I just want to say, I'm on the, I'm on the, uh, BUC committee currently, and I will tell you that one of the things that was very appealing to me was when we looked at the middle school. Because I've been concerned about Larksburg, such, such a large population of students in that middle school. They're not overpopulated, but they're, they're a huge middle school. And, um, so when I saw that we were going to be able to help, uh, Kempsville by taking some of the students from Larksburg and putting them into Kempsville, uh, I felt like that, that was a, a win-win, and also, uh, Independence would take some, a few students, only eighteen students. But still, I think it will greatly help the Larksburg School District, um, to lose that many students. I just felt like we, we, we tend to have a lot of, um, uh, behavior problems when there's a large, large population in a, in a school that size. And so, um, this was very appealing to me for the less than middle school situation.
Ms. Franklin.
And I just have one additional question. Um, this is probably for Dr. Robertson as well. So, i- is Point of View currently a Title I school? They are currently a Title I school? Yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. Um, and then how does that, how, how does this rezoning potentially impact the Title I status? I saw Ms. Silverman here, but
Yeah, Ms. Silverman would be the expert on that answer.
And I would love to hear from her. So I would, I, I'm just very interested because I also heard some comments that, you know, having, um, them go to a Title I school might provide some advantages. But, you know, then we, how, how does the, the status change potentially?
I love hearing that you're hearing positivity about what I support because clearly I'm biased. But, um, I would love to give you a hard answer, and I like to always be able to, and this is a moving target. Some of the things that we have to consider is that we're pulling data on family incomes from every school, not just our Title I schools. And so, and we do that typically in April. We're pulling data that's defining how we create our application that we submit to you in May to inform the schools we identify.
Right.
In addition to that, we don't have something that we use to identify these families that live in this community are having this specific income and these don't. So it's, and it's hard, we, I would never say this community has more than another. I don't have access to that information. Also, what's happening in the rest of the community helps to rank what's happening and who's identified. So I'm giving you like multiple things that make it hard for me to be able to articulate an answer for you. What I can say to you is, is that we use the data from this year to inform next year. So any decision, if you decided to make one, would not necessarily impact Title I identification for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It doesn't mean data doesn't change from year to year. It just wouldn't be the rezoning that impacts that. It would possibly, I would find it out the following twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which then could have an impact the following school year.
And, and I didn't hear anything about Arrowhead or Kempsville Elementary, so I assume that they are not?
Currently, Title I schools that are affected by this for elementary are Point of View and Pembroke. Those are our two current Title I schools out of the four. Currently, Arrowhead and Kempsville are not. And none of the middle schools currently that we've been discussing are Title I schools. But I do like to say too, because I heard you bring it up, um, we do offer a lot of additional support. I also oversee pre-K. Point of View has not been a school we could put a pre-K classroom into because there's been no space.
Right.
By have, making space available, it gives us opportunities to put additional programming. I heard them talking about additional academic programs. This is one of them that we could consider adding that would help to benefit. We know that, it doesn't mean we're not serving families that live in the Point of View community if they're eligible for our pre-K program, but they're taken, they are sent to Kempsville, they're sent to Arrowhead or any other school. And they often are providing their own transportation. We also know that it's best for families, if they can start in the school, that they'll continue to matriculate through, building relationships and knowledge, and so this would give us that opportunity, which if in fact you voted this way, And so this will give us that opportunity, which if in fact you voted this way, is on my agenda to add, if possible.
Okay, thank you so much. That was very helpful.
No problem.
So um when you're first elected, you're welcomed, and then people say, I hope you never have to um sit through a rezoning. And so here we are, but let me just say to our families. Virginia Beach City Public Schools is phenomenal everywhere. We're just a really great school division. And so I hope that whatever this board decides, whatever the outcome is. That all of your your fears and your worries are alleviated on your child's first day in their new school. Because our teachers are wonderful everywhere. And um um I I think a lot of times children fare better than parents. And um but as a former first-grade teacher, um I I I will, I will just say um. I think the kids will be great, and they will love their new teacher in their new school, wherever that is. So anybody else before we move on?
Yes, sir.
I I just wanna say, yeah, thank you for Mr. Brookwell and Mr. Freeman, um and frankly, all the staff. This this pro- thi- this is a big project, obviously. It touches a lot of people. And uh somebody from every part uh of the school division participated in helping to make make sure it came to the best answer we could. While I'll acknowledge there's no perfect plan here. And I also wanna thank Connor, who's hiding quietly in the back, taking note for all his hard work.
Yeah, I think you earned a stripe there, Mr. Sayak. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Okay, and so um item D is behavioral, and no, it's not. Item C is Compass to Twenty Thirty Strategic Framework. Um and and this is the report on public comment, and we welcome Dr. Lisa Baniki, Executive Director of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Regina, you're gonna click for me, right? Because there, oh, okay, there is a clicker here. Sorry for the flow. Let me start again. Is that okay? Good, good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chairwoman Franklin, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. Tonight's presentation will cover the feedback we received in response to the draft of our strategic framework. Revisions made and next steps in the strategic planning process. I'll walk you through the key components and how public input has shaped the final draft. As part of the development process, we shared the draft strategic framework with both the Ad Hoc Strategic Planning Committee and Compass Collaborative. Back in September for feedback, and made a few revisions prior to introducing the draft as an information item for the school board on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Following that, we invited public comment through an online forum from October ninth to October twenty-third, reaching out to stakeholders through multiple channels. We received a total of seventy-two public comments, and we asked three key questions. What do you like about the draft plan? What questions do you have about the plan? And what other suggestions do you have that could strengthen the plan's impact for students in the coming years? And as you can see from the graph, we received more public comments in response to Compass to Twenty Thirty than the two prior frameworks. In preparation for this presentation, the comments were analyzed to identify themes. The results were shared with senior leadership to identify potential revisions to clarify and strengthen the framework. When asked, what do you like about the plan? Several key themes emerged. Respondents appreciated the plan's clarity, structure, and its concise nature. This theme had the most comments associated with it. There were also support for the focus on social-emotional learning and inclusivity. As well as an emphasis on future-ready skills. Several respondents also mentioned they liked that the plan included a focus on students and or teachers. Community engagement also stood out as a highlight. There were five respondents who indicated that they did not like anything about the plan. The primary themes to emerge when reviewing the questions people had about the plan were related to questions about how the plan would be implemented. How we intend to communicate with and engage our community as we implement the plan, and how we will measure and ensure progress. When asked for suggestions for strengthening the plan's impact for students in coming years. There were themes related to communication about the plan, focusing on future-ready attributes, and finding ways to involve students more. Based on feedback, one revision we made was adding more information about the planning process. And the individuals involved in developing the framework. This additional context helps stakeholders understand the collaborative nature of the development process. The description of the planning process is provided prior to the framework in the final draft. We also have also provided more detailed context around the division's future-ready profile. As this will be the primary driver of the work of Compass to Twenty Thirty. As a reminder, the revised profile reflects the feedback we received as part of the initial input phase of the planning process last fall. As well as recommendations received from the Ad Hoc Strategic Planning Committee. It also reflects the work of central office and school-based staff to streamline the profile. Based on a review of durable skills identified by leading organizations in education and workforce readiness. In Compass to Twenty Thirty, the revised language about the profile makes it clear that as a division. We are committed to ensuring students have a strong academic foundation. In addition to the competencies that students will need to succeed in an ever-changing world. The revised language also reflects the understanding that families and the community play a critical role in students acquiring these attributes. A specific revision was made to goal one, challenge and support each student to excel and be future-ready. To clarify who we mean by stakeholders, and specifically call out fine arts to signal the division's continued commitment to this area. In response to the evolving digital landscape, we've also updated the definition of digital literacy. This now includes responsible use of emerging technologies like artificial intelligence to enhance critical thinking and intellectual growth. The final revision includes providing the web address for the strategic framework and indicating our commitment to keep our wider community involved and engaged in the work. Looking ahead, the final draft of Compass to Twenty Thirty will be presented for action on November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Throughout the month of November through February, we will also be inviting schools to engage students in discussions around the future-ready profile. To further define, from students' point of view, what the attributes look like in practice for elementary, middle, and high school students. We will engage in strategy-specific action planning from December to February, followed by office and departmental strategy sessions. To align the work of the offices to the new strategic framework. In the months leading up to our broader launch in July and August twenty twenty-five, we'll work with departments, schools, and administrators. To ensure a smooth rollout to our schools and community. We'll be gathering baseline data for the key navigational markers this year and plan to share the information with the school board next fall. Thank you for your time and engagement in this important work. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Um I appreciate all of your work on this, and um I believe it was Ms. Anderson. You also served on the Ad Hoc Committee and Mr. Callen, is that correct? So I wanna thank you guys for your time. Um I am curious, is there a way that we can um get the. Copy of the comments that you received, um verbatim?
You should have those. It's right here.
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, okay.
So yes, there is.
Thank you. Right, okay. Um I did notice it was really, really big when we sat down. Um I am gonna go back to slide eleven, if you may.
Yes, digital literacy.
Yeah, um so I think it's no secret um that when it comes to the topic of generative AI. Um that I'm in unsupportive of any language that would um allow for that without a specific school board vote. And um I I believe that this moves that ball in that direction. Um so I I do have some significant concerns uh with the addition of that uh language. I'm I'm fine with um, you know, asking a question and getting um some sort of resource. But I'm not okay with, you know, telling something, write me a paragraph on X, Y, Z. And um that being a a process that um we put into our compass plan. Um so I just wanted to um let you know um that 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 particular language is gonna be a sticky wicket for me here. So um I just wanted to make sure I didn't not say anything.
So I I think I'll add, Ms. Brown, um the state of Virginia, the Virginia Department of Education right now. Is sponsoring a generative AI learning series across the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we are slap-dab in the middle of that with a number of other divisions. So the state of Virginia has taken a position that generative AI is something we must explore in Virginia schools. But we must explore it in the right way. So what this does is it acknowledges the fact that, much like when we introduced the web browsers. And thirty years ago, we introduced graphing calculators. There were a lot of concerns about the impact, positive or negative, with students. So we'll be very thoughtful uh in the approach, but we are following the lead of the Virginia Department of Education and State. Uh and exploring how we could utilize generative AI appropriately in the classroom. We'll be prepared to come back to the board sometime in February or March, depending on how deep we are into the budget. To give another update on where we are with the generative AI work. So I'll just say that we're not going so low on this. This is something the entire state is investigating.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. I saw um in some of the feedback, people had some concerns about what does a certain word mean. And I really like that we have definitions here. Um and I just wanna clarify, will these key terms, the definition page, be a part of the package? What we put on our website, what we put out there?
That whole document, yes, is what I would consider, if someone were to ask me for a strategic framework, it's that. That whole packet. It's providing more context around it. It doesn't mean we won't also have a one pager, right? Another way of summarizing it, but we will certainly have that out there for everyone to see. Because of the key terms was a big piece of people saying, what does some of this mean?
Yeah, and I I think it's very important, because what my definition is of some of these terms may be different from someone else's definition. So thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Of course.
I think we all recognize how much work this is. Um and I really appreciate everything that you do. Some of the language in in the um comments is flowery. So um. Um, yes. It's interesting to read, though, but this is, but it's important. It's important.
Every comment was read. Every comment is considered and. It's reflected, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, this is very important to read this, yeah. Thank you for providing this.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Baniki. Now, moving on to D, Behavioral and Mental Health Supports for Students, the One-Year Implementation Evaluation. And we welcome Dr. Allison Bach and Dr. No- Noelle Williams, Program Evaluation Specialists, Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. I am Dr. Allison Bach, along with Dr. Noelle Williams. We are Program Evaluation Specialists with the Office of Research and Evaluation. Today, we will provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the implementation evaluation of behavioral and mental health supports for students. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. Since the pandemic, data have shown that students' behavioral and mental health have worsened nationwide. In twenty twenty-one, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued a national state of emergency for child and adolescent mental health. Multiple supports are in place in all VBCPS schools, including support from school counselors, behavior intervention specialists. The Student Response Team Process, and Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. In twenty-three, twenty-four, six additional initiatives that focused on student behavioral and mental health needs were either expanded or developed. These six initiatives shown on this slide were the focus of this evaluation. As will be discussed in the coming slides, these initiatives addressed various aspects of behavioral and mental health. Some initiatives were implemented at individual schools, and some were accessible to students division-wide. This implementation evaluation focused on several key aspect- aspects of each initiative. Including the purpose and overview, target audience, initiative components, goals and objectives, general perceptions, and the cost. Additionally, whether staff were familiar with each initiative and general staff perceptions of behavioral and mental health supports were included. Goals for the initiatives focused on behavior, social-emotional learning skills, well-being, absenteeism. And empowering teachers by increasing capacity to address students' needs and manage the classroom learning experience. These goal areas are in alignment with the division's strategic framework, Compass to Twenty Twenty-Five. With the goal to support the physical and mental health of all students. And to struc- strengthen the social-emotional skills they need to become balanced, resilient learners who are personally and socially responsible. These goal areas will be the focus of the twenty-four, twenty-five outcome evaluation. Data collected for the evaluation included interviews with central office staff, review review of program documents. Site visits, surveys, student and staff participation information, and cost data. School-based staff were surveyed in April twenty twenty-four. Overall response rates and total numbers, number of respondents are shown on the slide. Although these response rates were somewhat lower than we normally see, they were not unexpected. Due to varying levels of staff familiarity and involvement with the initiatives. Respondents were provided with a question asking them to select which of the initiatives they were familiar with. If staff were familiar, they were directed to more specific questions about that initiative. The numbers of respondents to survey items varied for each initiative and will be noted on the graphs in the upcoming slides. In addition, all staff who responded to the survey were provided general survey items about behavioral and mental health supports for students. Parents of students who participated in programs that offered individualized services were also invited to participate in a survey. Response information is shown on the slide for two initiatives. Due to limited responses, parent results for two other programs were not included. The first initiative that will be reviewed was responsive practices. Which is comprised of classroom practices and strategies to integrate and build academic and social emotional skills. Responsive practices were implemented school-wide at two elementary schools during twenty-three, twenty-four. The purposes of the initiative at these two schools was to increase students' social-emotional learning skills or sense of belonging. Professional learning and support for the initiative was provided by the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation, or PGI, staff. Prior to the school year, school administrators selected the responsive practices that would best meet their school's goals. At one school, teachers implemented morning meetings, while at the other school, teachers could choose between teacher language or interactive modeling. Morning meetings involve students engaging in a greeting that builds peer respect and connection. Practicing listening and communication skills while sharing news, and engaging in a brief cooperative activity that promotes teamwork. The teacher then shares a written message that sets the tone for the learning of the day. Teacher language is using intentional language to support student engagement and and behavior. For example, teachers should use direct, clear, and brief language. Interactive modeling is using a seven-step process to explicitly teach procedures or routines through demonstration and practice. As shown in the figure on the slide, thirty staff members who were involved with the responsive practices. At one of the two elementary schools responded to these survey items. Nearly all staff agreed the professional learning provided them with knowledge and tools to use these practices. And that PGI staff provided them with helpful resources and support. On the survey, staff were asked to indicate their focus areas for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Of the staff who focused on morning meetings, eighty-five percent agreed morning meetings helped build their capacity to increase students' positive behaviors. While all staff who focused on teacher language and interactive modeling agreed they were confident in their ability to effectively use the practices to support students. In addition, baseline data showed at least seventy percent of staff agreed their focus area helped improve students' positive behaviors. Self-management skills or sense of belonging. The second initiative was school-wide behavior intervention support professional learning. This initiative provided professional learning based on concepts from Behavior Intervention Support Team, or BIST. Which encourages intervening early to help students learn replacement skills to reduce disruptive behaviors. Professional learning was implemented at five elementary schools during twenty-three, twenty-four. Implementation during the first year was flexible. Principals could determine the level and timelines for professional learning their staff participated in. And they could determine the BIST concepts that would best meet the needs at their school. BIST concepts support schools in using common language, making school-wide expectations clear. And creating predictable routines and environments. BIST provides schools with professional learning and suggestions for continuum of intervention strategies designed to increase teaching time for all students. Facilitate lifelong change and skill sets for students with challenging behaviors, decrease disruptive behavior in the classroom. And provide relief for. decrease disruptive behavior in the classroom, and provide relief for adults who are working directly with students. BIST views students who exhibit disruptive behaviors as missing skills and includes interventions that hold students accountable for their actions while supporting their development of skills that will enable them to be successful in school and life. BIST offers several options for intervention strategies to help teachers and administrators inter- intervene to develop students' replacement skills. If students engage in disruptive behavior, students may move from their regular seat to a safe seat, which is a desk or seat within the classroom to help the student regroup. If students continue to have difficulty, they may be asked to move to a buddy room, which is a safe seat in another classroom, which allows students with minor behaviors to reset and behavior expectations in the classroom to be maintained. Another strategy is the focus room, which is a room that is separate from the students' classroom. All schools employed a teacher assistant who oversaw the focus room and worked with students there. Within each option, students are supported in learning appropriate skills. They are held accountable to process the situation with staff, including taking ownership for their behavior, where they could use behavior or think sheets, practicing replacement skills and planning for better choices. It is important to note that the VBCPS Student Code of Conduct still applies and all stu- and students are referred to the office as appropriate based on VBCPS discipline guidelines. When asked about various intervention strategies, survey data showed that staff involved with the initiative were most likely to indicate the safe seat and focus room strategies improved student behavior to a large or moderate extent. Overall, seventy-five percent of staff involved with school-wide behavior intervention support professional learning agreed the professional learning helped empower them with the language, systems and structures to help support students with behavior concerns. And seventy-two percent agreed the professional learning provided them the necessary knowledge and tools to manage student behavior. Additionally, baseline data showed a majority of staff agreed the information learned allowed them to decrease disruptive behavior in their classroom or school and allow them to increase their teaching time for students. One additional component of this is parent information and involvement. With this being the first year of implementation, schools varied in the extent to which information was provided to parents regarding this strategies. Survey data showed thirty-two percent of staff involved with the initiative agreed parents understood their school's approach to supports and strategies to help students change unproductive behaviors. The next initiative is the Communities and Schools, or CIS initiative, which is operated by site coordinators who are employed through communities and schools of Hampton Roads. The site coordinators leverage community resources to meet students' needs. The initiative began in seventeen eighteen with three schools and was then expanded to three more schools in twenty-three twenty-four. A key component of the CIS initiative is establishing school-wide goals as well as goals for students referred for individualized support. These goal areas typically include reducing absenteeism or improving students' academic performance, behavior or social emotional learning. At the school level, CIS site coordinators conducted needs assessment each year to establish these school goals and school support plans. Throughout the year, coordinators provide events that focus on meeting the school needs. Examples include providing a STEM night or an Afrobeat dance class. During the twenty-three twenty-four school year, CIS coordinators provided seventy-two total events related to school goal areas with nearly sixteen thousand students attending. CIS coordinators also provide events to ensure students and families' basic needs are being met, such as providing hygiene products or clothing and shoe drives. As shown on the slide, nearly all staff involved with CIS who responded to the items agreed it provided useful resources and support for families and that the community partnerships were valuable. Another component of the Communities and Schools um, initiative is providing individualized support to students in need. Individual student goals and plans are established for referred students in collaboration with families. The student support through CIS includes one-on-one mentoring with the coordinator, meeting in small groups and leveraging community partnerships. For example, students preferred for support at two schools could work with the teen outreach program, which offered students the opportunity to conduct service learning projects. During the twenty-three twenty-four school year, three hundred and eighty-three students were referred for individualized support through CIS. As shown on the slide, eighty-three percent of staff involved with CIS agreed they understood the process for identifying students who may benefit from support. And ninety-three percent agreed CIS provided assistance to staff by helping students who may be at risk and need support. All parents who responded to the survey agreed the resources provided had been helpful for their family and working with the initiative helped to meet their child's needs. Of several areas in which CIS could have helped students, staff involved with CIS were most likely to indicate the initiative improved said, student sense of belonging with ninety percent noting improvement. At this time, Dr. Noel Williams will share the information for the next three initiatives. The next program reviewed was the Behavior and Social Emotional, or BASE program. This program is a six-to-nine week, one-time intervention program for general education students in grades K through five who have limited educational experiences or social skills that lead them to engage in challenging behaviors. The program is located at Windsor Oaks, but elementary students across the division may be referred. The purpose of the program is to teach students coping strategies, problem-solving skills, and social skills needed for school and behavior management. The program was piloted for K to twelve, K to two students in seventeen eighteen at select elementary schools and expanded to all elementary schools in eighteen nineteen. In twenty-three twenty-four, the program was expanded to include grades three to five, but due to some staffing challenges, this was paused in fall twenty twenty-three. A staffing solution was identified in February twenty twenty-four, which allowed students in grades three through five to attend, although none were referred during the remainder of the year. In twenty-three twenty-four, twenty-nine students were enrolled in the program. The majority were male, eighty-six percent, and about half were white, fifty-two percent. Kindergarten had the most students enrolled, followed by first grade and then second grade. Base staff for each of the two classrooms consisted of one behavior intervention teacher, one student support specialist and two teacher assistants. The program is also supported by a school psychologist and doctoral intern. Base staff members participated in crisis prevention training to prepare for their job responsibilities. Of the four base staff members who responded to the survey item, seventy-five percent agreed the crisis prevention training they received provided them with the necessary knowledge and tools to recognize and respond to student behavior. On the survey, a hundred and forty staff members indicated they were involved with the BASE program by either working in the BASE program at Windsor Oaks or working with a student who had been in the BASE program. As shown on slide, eighty-three percent of staff involved in the program agreed it provided them a way to help teachers support students and eighty-five percent of staff agreed the process for transitioning a student from their home school to the BASE program was communicated clearly in the Student Response Team five oh four meeting. When asked a similar question about the experience, eighty percent of the ten parents who responded to the survey agreed their child's transition from the home school to the program at Windsor Oaks was successful. Students in the BASE program remained together throughout the day, except for during lunch and PE when they were with other students at Windsor Oaks. A typical day for students in the program includes morning meeting, social emotional learning, self-regulation activities, preferred activity time, goal setting, academics and structured movement. Base staff were ax- asked the extent to which the different BASE components helped provide the support student needed. The top-rated components are displayed on the slide. A hundred percent of the BASE staff who responded to this item indicated social emotional learning groups helped support students' needs to a large extent. Eighty percent of BASE staff indicated morning meeting, preferred activity time, self-regulation and goal setting also help support students' needs to a large extent. At the six-to-eight week mark, the BASE team begins the process of preparing students to transition back to their home school. The BASE team creates a transition plan that is shared with the home school teacher and BASE staff members support the students' transition back to their home school onsite for a minimum of two days. The BASE team creates a toolbox for the student's home school teacher that includes resources that were successful while the student was at the BASE program. When asked about the transition back to the home school, eighty percent of staff involved in the BASE program agreed the process was clearly communicated in the Student Response Team five oh four meeting. Staff members involved with the BASE program noted that in some cases, students had difficulty with the transition back to the classroom setting. Parents were also asked about the return to the home school. Twenty-five percent of the ten parents who responded to the survey agreed their student's transition back to their home school was successful and their student had the support they needed when they returned. Parents were asked about their general perceptions of the BASE program. Seventy percent of parents who responded agreed the BASE program provided helpful information to support their child's behavioral needs and that the BASE program was helpful. All BASE staff agreed the program provided helpful resources and support for families. According to program documentation, the goal of the BASE program is to decrease aggressive, disruptive, defiant behaviors that lead to out-of-school suspensions. At least sixty-six percent of staff involved in the BASE program agreed it provided useful strategies to help students emotional regulation and behavior, help students emotional regulation, improve students' overall behavior and improve students' aggressive, defiant or disruptive behavior. The next initiative that was part of the evaluation was Rapid Response. In partnership with the Child and Youth Behavioral, CYBH Division with the City of Virginia Beach, Rapid Reson- Rapid Response provides students in grades pre-K through five with behavioral health screening, assessment, consultation, referral and linkage to community-based services. As displayed on the figure, Rapid Response begins with a referral. Students are referred to Rapid Response if they have been identified by school staff as having a possible behavioral or mental health need. Once a need is identified, an administrator completes an online form that is reviewed by the Office of Student Support Services. Once reviewed, it is sent to CYBH. The Office of Student Support Services sends a release form to the administrator for the student's parents or guardians to sign. Once the consent forms are signed, Rapid Response can begin their process and schedule a student assessment which takes place at the student's school. Following the assessment and any other information collect, collected, the clinician writes the recommendation and schedules a consultation with the family to discuss the outcome. At this time, clinicians give the recommendation, which can include parent-child interaction therapy, family or group therapy or medication management. All recommendations are at the cost of families and their respective insurance if applicable. In twenty-three twenty-four, fifty-eight elementary students were referred to Rapid Response. Kindergarten and second grade had the largest number of referrals. The most common reasons for referral included disruptive behavior, emotional regulation, trauma and mental health concerns. On the survey, fifty staff members who indicated they had referred a student to Rapid Response were asked their perceptions of components of the program. As displayed on the slide, ninety-six percent of staff who had referred a student agreed they understood the referral process and seventy-eight percent agreed the referral process was efficient. Seventy-four percent of staff agreed the parent consent process was efficient and seventy percent agreed the mental health assessment process was effective. The goal of Rapid Response is to connect students and families with mental health supports in the community. Seventy-one percent of staff who referred a student agreed Rapid Response provided useful resources and support for families. And eighty-one percent agreed the program was effective at providing students and families with recommendations for treatments. Eighty-two percent of staff agreed the program was effective at providing students and families with information about community resources. Additionally, seventy-six percent of staff who referred a student to Rapid Response reported being satisfied with the partnership between VBCPS and CYBH. The final program included in the evaluation was the Bridge Program. In partnership with the Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters, CHKD, the Bridge Program provides students in grades six through twelve with mental health screening, short-term intervention and/or coordination and referral to ongoing health services in the community. The options for interim care provided to students include individual therapy, group therapy and medication management with a psychiatrist. Individual, individual and group therapy can be accessed at no charge to families and medication management is at the expense of the parent or guardian via health insurance. In twenty-three twenty-four, a hundred and eleven secondary students were referred to the Bridge Program. There were more students referred to the program in the middle school level than at the high school level. The most common reason for referral were mood or anxiety. On the survey, thirty-four staff members indicated they had referred a student to the program. As displayed on the slide, a high percentages of staff agreed they understood the referral process, the referral process was efficient and the parent consent process was efficient. Staff also agreed, eighty-eight percent, that the bridge intake assessment process was effective. Another component is Wellness Up, which is a small group program run by CHKD clinicians aimed at helping students develop an understanding of oneself, manage stress and manage conflict. Thirty-four students participated the program in twenty-three twenty-four, seventeen during summer school two thousand twenty-three and seventeen in spring two thousand twenty-four. A hundred percent of staff who indicated they had recommended students to attend Wellness Up or were familiar with it agreed it was effective at providing students tools to support their well-being. Another component of the Bridge Program is CHKD providing professional learning opportunities for staff. In twenty-three twenty, twenty-three twenty-four, CHKD provided youth mental health first-day training to all school counselors, which counts towards their license renewal. Of those who participated in the training, eighty-nine percent agreed the training provided them with the necessary knowledge and tools to recognize and respond to students' behavioral and mental health needs. The final component of the Bridge Program includes a partnership with the VBCPS Office of Security and Emergency Management, OSEM, to assist with after-hours alerts through Securely. Securely alerts OSEM if concerning student behavior relating to safety is identified on a VBCPS issued device such as a Chromebook. If OSEM is alerted, they contact CHKD and a clinician from CHKD will contact the student or family to follow up on the alert and address the concern. CHKD clinicians handled forty-eight Securely alerts last year. The goal of the Bridge Program is to reduce the need for inpatient psychiatric hospitalization and the program helps students and families access mental health care services. High percentages of staff who refer to students to the program agree the program provided useful resources and support for families. It provided assistance to staff by helping support students' behavioral mental health needs and it was effective at providing students with direct mental health services. When asked about the overall satisfaction with the partnership between VBCPS and CHKD, ninety-seven percent of staff who referred a student to the Bridge Program reported being satisfied. This slide provides a summary of the cost last year in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four for each of the six initiatives that were part of the evaluation. The second column provides the total cost of the initiative. Staffing costs were based on staff who supported the program full-time, which could have been from converting existing allocations to support the program. The third column shows that a large portion of the costs were covered by external funding sources, sources such as ESAR or Title I grant funding last year. The last column shows the total paid by VBCPS for these initiatives, which was approximately seven hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Another evaluation question focused on how familiar staff were with the six initiatives. On the survey, being familiar with the initiatives ranged from hearing or knowing about initiative to being actively involved and implementing the initiative. As a reminder, the three initiatives noted on the slide were accessible to students throughout the division at specified school levels. For these initiatives, most student support staff and elementary school administrators indicated they were familiar with them. However, lower percentages of teachers were familiar with these initiatives. In addition, approximately half of secondary administrators indicated they were familiar with the Bridge Program, which is a division-wide initiative at the secondary level. For the three initiatives that operated only at specific schools, nearly all staff who worked at the schools implementing responsive practices and school-wide behavior intervention support professional learning were familiar with them. A lower percentage of staff at schools implementing communities in school were familiar with it. The last evaluation question folks, focused on general perceptions of behavioral and mental health supports for students. As shown by the first two bars, seventy-five to seventy-six percent of staff agreed there were supports at their school to help students, students demonstrate positive behavior and access mental health services. As shown by the last two bars, sixty-nine to seventy-four percent of staff agreed they felt that when they had concerns about students' behavior and mental health needs. Sixty-one to sixty-four percent of staff indicated they were satisfied with the supports to help students demonstrate positive behavior and help students with mental health needs. Analysis by staff group showed administrators had the most positive perceptions of these items, followed by student support staff. Instructional staff had the lowest agreement and satisfaction percentages. The first recommendation is to continue the behavioral and mental health initiatives with modifications noted in the following recommendations. The second recommendation is to publicize the behavior and mental health supports to all school staff members along with the types of needs the initiatives address. The third recommendation is to improve the process for providing parents with information and resources about Behavior Intervention Support Team practices as implementation continues this year. The fourth recommendation is to prioritize the identification of behavioral supports since, that can successfully be implemented after students' transition from the BASE program back to their home school. The fifth recommendation is to continue to, continue to work to maximize opportunities for students to participate and. to participate in Wellness Up as part of the Bridge Program. The last recommendation is to conduct an outcome evaluation and twenty-four, twenty-five focus on progress toward meeting program goals for school-wide behavior intervention support professional learning, communities in school, and the base program, along with progress related to these recommendations. At this time, Mr. Robert Jameson, Executive Director of Student Support Services, will share the administration's response.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. As was just shared, my name is Robert Jameson, Executive Director for the Office of Student Support Services. The administration, make sure the administration concurs with the proposed recommendations. On September tenth, Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director for Elementary Instruction, and I provided an overview of the integrated systems of support implemented in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The details shared in this evening's evaluation highlight some of the behavioral and mental health resources offered in our school division as part of our integrated systems of support. As we shared during the September tenth workshop presentation, everything begins in the classroom and core classroom instruction is the foundation of our integrated system of support. In VB CPS, staff plan, teach, and assess to become aware of students' needs and we use our student response team process to effectively respond. In this evening's presentation, you heard details on some of the programs, interventions, and the strategies used by VB CPS staff to ensure students have what they need to experience success. From tier-one responsive practices and BIS strategies to tier-three interventions like communities and schools, the base program, Rapid Response, and the Bridge Program, VB CPS leverages an array of supports to foster student, excuse me, to foster scholastic excellence. In alignment with the recommendations from this initial evaluation of several programs, the Departments of Teaching and Learning as well as school leadership commit to working with the Department of Communications and Community Engagement to widely share information on available programs supporting students' behavioral and mental health needs. Additionally, school division staff will continue to prioritize the identification of behavioral supports to successfully transition students back to their home schools, especially from the base program. The identified supports and strategies will also help students transitioning back to their comprehensive schools from other settings. Furthermore, as a division, we will look to expand access to mental health services for all pre-K through twelve students. And this initial evaluation shows the progress of several initiatives our school division recently implemented. So we look forward to seeing how our hard work positively impacts students and families in our community for the years to come. Throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, school division staff will continue to lead this work, monitor our progress related to behavioral and mental health supports, and make the necessary adjustments to improve student achievement. This concludes the administration's response, and staff from teaching, from planning innovation and accountability, school leadership, and teaching and learning are available to answer any of your questions.
So as I wait for someone to join in, I have a question, um, first about the money. Where, since we no longer have ESAR funds, where might we find six hundred eighty thousand dollars to keep up with the program as is?
I got, just making sure, I don't want to overstep anytime, want to defer to those who may want to speak more. One of the points of discussion, please keep in mind that the figures you see on that slide are for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We are still impl- and ESAR ended So for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we are already using a variety of local funds or other grant funds for these programs to continue this school year.
I've had the pleasure of seeing a student as, as of witnessing students' success from the base program, it really is remarkable. But I'll be honest, one of the things I did not know until last year was the Bridge Program. Might you just take a, a second and explain to the board and the public exactly what, who qualifies for the Bridge Program?
Gladly. So in March twenty-twenty-three and in April twenty-twenty-four, I shared updates regarding mental health supports in Virginia Beach and in those presentations, I shared information about Bridge Program. So we have students, as you know, who are experiencing mental health concerns related to depression, anxiety. As you heard, some related to mood, and when we say mood, just the ability to interact and engage with peers who sometimes then are expressing concerns that require more support than what we can provide through our school staff. Oftentimes, students some, I won't say all the time, but oftentimes this is attached to suicidal ideation or risk for self-harm with the intent to end one's life. When those situations arise, obviously, school staff are concerned and are ready to respond. It's in those moments when you're seeing students who are coming to you consistently that a Bridge Program referral is appropriate. That's on the front end. On the back end, there are students whose families have taken them to CHKD or they've taken them to Council Behavioral Health, or they're coming from Barry Robinson, and as they're returning to school, they are continuing to express concerns related to their mental health and perhaps they don't qualify for something else in the community. The Bridge Program then exists on the back end, again as a bridge, for the student to transition from a mental health facility to the comprehensive school.
Um, Ms. Owens.
Okay. Want to take a moment to just really congratulate the division on this, on this work. This is work that's not happening at this level at any other division within our state. And it is largely due to, uh, the work of the Mental Health Task Force and uh, being able to get a, a plan for implementation of all of the, the ideas that have come from there and that they continue to process and tweak for improvement. And so I am incredibly proud, uh, of the work that has been done, I think, uh, of special note. Uh, the areas of agreement, uh, with a couple of the specific programs. For instance, the communities in school seeing, uh, levels of agreement at make sure I quote it here, um, that ninety-five percent of staff uh, feel like those community partnerships are valuable in the school. Ninety-five percent of agreement on anything that we ever send a, a survey on is amazing. I would say we're, we're seeing again impressive areas of agreement with the base program and, uh, with Rapid Response, which I'm especially pleased that we are able to partner with because they are, uh, Child and Youth Services, a division of social services in our city. And so that connection cost the division zero dollars and zero cents, which is our favorite amount to pay. I am very, uh, pleased that we have been able to kind of transition and having, uh, CHKD assist with handling the securely, uh, concerns as they're coming up. I know that our, uh, Office of Student Safety, whatever the long Right, Emergency Management, Security, um, Awesomeness of Protection, uh, are doing you know, the best that they certainly can do in managing all of those areas, but it does, uh, benefit from a level of expertise when having these conversations with parents and caretakers uh, to really get the, the point across and, and make sure that we're, um, the person who's on the end of the phone is able to offer services and help and advice and kind of walk parents through that. So I'm, I'm really excited about a, a lot of what we see in this report. I, uh, acknowledge that there are a few areas that we would like to see, um, higher levels of, of agreements. Particularly maybe the, in the school-wide behavior intervention, uh, support where we only have about thirty-two percent of staff saying that they think the parents understood the school's approach to support behavior. And obviously, if the, the parents aren't understanding and behind that approach, then it's less likely to be successful. Um, so I, uh, am in agreement with the administration's recommendations on focusing on improving that and, uh, advertising and, and getting that out there. I think it's a, that we're at a really good place for a starter program with these, uh, new services and that as they're out there and more students get to participate, then others will hear about it and other staff members will see the benefits. Um, and so I, I'm excited to watch these numbers improve as I continue to watch from the sidelines in the years to come. So thank you so much for all of the work you've done to the full team, uh, on these programs.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
So, um, my first question is on slide seven, it in, um, slide seven references intervention strategies. But I, I don't see a strategy here that involves parents. So how are we involving parents and being part of a solution for repetitive behavior problems?
Well, I don't want to overspeak for Department of School Leadership, but that anything involving, or, excuse me, involving a referral will include the due process of speaking with families and informing them of what occurred in the building. Any next steps that are taken, whether it's through the student response team process or the administration speaking with the family, it has to be collaborative. Um, so what we currently do is outreach. In terms of the different interventions that are going to be used moving forward, whether that's in a formal setting, student response team, and there's a discussion of perhaps if we're seeing a pattern of behavior or even considering that there might be a pattern of behavior, we would need consent if we wanted to do any kinds of observations or if we wanted to do a functional behavioral assessment. So families have to be involved in that. They have to inform us what they're seeing at home. They have to let us know what they believe would be helpful or would be more beneficial in the school setting so that we can put something in place that allows a student to engage with instruction on a consistent basis. So the strategies that you don't see is the day-to-day work that we do from school counselors, administrators, and teachers calling home, speaking with families, and then using that information during the meetings that we do have.
Are we requiring parents to come to school and address their own kids' behavior problems for repetitive problems?
I would have to turn to school leadership.
Yeah, so, and I'm going to ask Dr. Hamblin to come up to give a better description of what goes on with BIS that's on that slide. But of course, we do, in all situations, we're disciplining students as we're expecting parents to be a partner in how we improve that behavior. When you're seeing these intervention strategies, the reason I'm asking Dr. Hamblin, who oversees elementary schools, she could probably hone in a little more what goes on on BIS. But absolutely, it's always been an expectation, any repetitive student behaviors that parents are involved with in, in ensuring that that behavior improves, it's not in isolation.
Absolutely. As you know, um, behaviors only improve when you work in partnership with parents. The BIS program is currently housed in five of our schools, the three schools at the tri-campus, uh, Parkway Elementary, Anthea Elementary School. And really, BIS is about teaching students, uh, social and behavioral skills that they may have gaps in. And so really, it is about, um, the foundation of it is that when a child makes a wrong choice, we have one corrective, one warning kind of a deal. And then, um, really you want them to, if mistake happens again, then they go to the safe seat um, to process and every, e- every step of the way, there is a coaching process between an adult and the student. If the student is, continues to be unsuccessful, just as stated earlier, they would go to the buddy room and then possibly to the focus room where a teacher assistant there who is trained in helping them process their thoughts, their feelings, and why the decision-making is happening. And then the important part of that is the student has to work themselves back into the classroom. So they would go from the focus room back to the buddy room. Does well there, goes back to the safe seat and then comes in. And there, every step of the way, there is a rebuilding process of communication between the adult and the student so that we're rebuilding the, the trust and the relationship as it goes on. Eventually, as students begin to succeed in the program, we introduce student-to-student coaching where the student who had the difficulty before is now coaching other students on how to improve their behavior. And then we also have, um, contribution where a student gets a job within the school to where he becomes a pos- or she becomes a positive contributing member of the school social society and then sees himself as a positive light within the school building. And we've seen some great successes and we continue to look for, you know, more successes in the future. We are hopeful that we'll be able to expand the program in the years to come, um, but we wanted to make sure that we were moving in the right direction.
So if I can add to that, Ms. Manning as well, because it was in the script and I want to make sure everybody's very clear on this. Extremely disruptive behaviors do not move you to the buddy seat. You will be removed from class and go through the disciplinary process. So when you hear like buddy seat, you're thinking, well, kid becomes aggressive, are they going to sit? No. They're going to follow the disciplinary guidelines in terms of any significantly disruptive behavior. And another key component of BIS is the, it is to hold the student accountable to the behavior. And what you find often in the professional learnings, uh, sessions with BIS, where it's very liberating to the teacher is they are no longer seen as the problem. That they're saying, we're going to give you the skills to help the student become accountable and here's the strategies to do that. This has all been done, obviously, around the behavior concerns that are there. But I just want to make sure we're clear that we're not asking those schools to not go through significant discipline if there's an issue that needs to be addressed that way. And if you look at our discipline data in those schools, we still see those severe discipline incidents being handled in the manner of the disciplinary guidelines that are consistent. And the final thing I'll say, because I know Mr. Jameson said this, but this is from twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're in twenty-four, twenty-five, this year, year two of implementation. We're seeing better familiarity with the process and how that goes. But to Ms. Owens' point, uh, ensuring that we're effectively communicating with our parents has been a significant goal.
Yeah, and, you know, and I appreciate that and I appreciate all you guys are doing. I know it's difficult because I, I know the General Assembly years ago tied our hands on being able to expel students, um, from our elementary schools who are causing some major disruptions in our classrooms and that's why we have all these other programs. Um, because ultimately, I believe, I believe very strongly in parental rights, but I also believe very strongly in parental accountability. Parents should be the ones responsible for these behavior problems, not our teachers. Um, so I, I want to make sure that we are holding parents accountable to the level that we can, that we have the ability. And I, I didn't see anything in here about parental accountability and the strategies, but you know, I, I, I know again that our hands are a little bit tied on that. Um, and then my, my next, um, question is on slide twenty. Um, I, I do have concerns about, um, instructional staff, um, feeling supported when they have concerns about student behavior. This is an ongoing problem. Um, and I, I didn't see any recommendations in here that are addressing this and I hope that um, we are addressing this with our school leaders, um, our individual school leaders, that our staff must feel supported. This number is at sixty-nine percent average, low, low down fifty-seven. This number should be a hundred percent. There's no reason this number shouldn't be a hundred percent. Um, so what recommendations here are addressing those concerns?
So I will just, as, as a reminder, this was a, a general perception question, not specific to the six um, specific initiatives that we were focusing on. We just wanted to gather, uh, more general perceptions of, um, of staff, um, rather than you know, uh, this, six specific initiatives. So, and, um, so we will continue to monitor that, monitor that as well next, next year.
Well, this is something we've been monitoring since I came on the school board and the number's been low since I came on the school board.
So, Ms. Manning, if you don't mind, I, I'll try to take a crack at it. I, to be very candid, I don't think we're ever going to get a hundred percent. As a former principal, there were times they did not agree when I had to bring a kid back into their classroom for something they felt like should be at a certain level. So we're, we're not going to get, I think, completely to a hundred percent. I do think we are very much viewing our student discipline data on a consistent basis. I think if you look at our if you asked a teacher, what would, what does it mean to support them with discipline, I don't think you're going to get the same answer every time. For one person, it looks one way, another person is, if I want them removed, they should be removed. If I want them out, they should be out. And there's others that look at it differently. So what they mean by support is not common across the board either. So I, I share that with you as, as a former principal and engaging those conversations with teachers. That to me is where the support comes, is clarification on why certain decisions are made and how we're going to support them moving forward. But student discipline in my time in education has always been one that's open to some degree of interpretation of why did you make a decision that appears not to support me and it, you can't always get to that agreement.
Well, i- and I agree. I, I understand that point, but sixty-nine percent average is still very low, in my opinion.
Um, we're speaking to that as well as far as the recommendations. I just wanted to add that one of the things that we saw with the data was that the instructional staff had much lower perceptions of familiarity, being familiar with these wide-ranging initiatives. And one of our thoughts for that recommendation about publicizing the initiatives more widely to all staff was that awareness is, is a first step to make sure that they're aware that these supports are available. We would like to monitor that, um, with the recommendation, implementing that and, um, continue to monitor the perceptions of supports as staff become more familiar. So just speaking to the recommendations part of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you so much. Um, that was a lot of information, so I am gonna ask, could you possibly send your script to be able to review later? I would really appreciate that. Um, and I, I love that we have such great results in such a short period of time. Um, one of the questions I, I actually had was about the funding, uh, and the S R funds. And, um, do you feel confident that we're gonna be able to continue to find resources and budget and continue these programs? Because the one thing that concerns me is we start these amazing programs, and then due to whatever reason, funding or, or what have you, um, then, you know, we, we fall short being able to continue, and that, that would be disappointing. So, uh, do you feel confident that we're gonna be able to, um, continue finding resources and funding for this?
I, I won't, well, I'll say I, yes, I do. Uh, based on, one, your support, just from this past year. There was two hundred thousand dollars that the board supported going towards the bridge program for this school year. There are additional line items within the school leadership budget, Department of School Leadership, as well as in teaching and learning, that give the flexibility for us to prioritize the needs of our students in our schools, to then have professional learning like BIST be made available. So we, yes, and we continue to explore grants. We were just approved, I don't know if I'm allowed to say, but we were just approved for a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars from the state for another, uh, mental health grant, one that we were awarded from last year to carry forward funds for this year, which then allows us additional flexibility to expand programs that you heard tonight, like Wellness Up for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And then we have an additional opportunity through Child and Behavioral Health, or Child and Youth Behavioral Health, um, to maintain that partnership and even expand that partnership with direct services. So yes, it will take some innovation and creativity, but we are in a good place.
Okay.
Um, and if we're not, I'll come back and ask for money. So with that said. All kidding aside, we, we recognize the fiscal responsibility that we have with these programs.
Okay.
And we know that the value that it provides to our communities, and with consistent support, yes, um, we will be in a position to have these here for quite some time.
Well, and, and just, you know, to, um, you know, just kind of reiterate that, you know, just like when you're parenting, you, you have to, you know, so you start something, you wanna can, be able to be consistent. I think that's one of the biggest parts of great parenting is just the consistency and the accountability and, um, understanding of what expectations are. So speaking of that, I, I, I do agree, um, that, you know, we have parent rights, but we have parent responsibilities. And so what is the collaboration when we, uh, with the parents, when we are, you know, um, putting these students in the programs? And then also, you know, we have, uh, families sign a student code of conduct, you know, right the first, right in the first week of school. You know, how is it that we can possibly, um, while we're talking about the expectations of conduct and, and so forth, you know, how can we, um, ensure that we are creating, you know, collaboration, um, buy-in, accountability, uh, you know, at that time when we're already having those discussions?
I think we may have two different people who may respond to your questions on this one. Um, from a base program, from a bridge program, and from a rapid response standpoint, and even communities and schools, there is, there have to be con, there are conversations that occur with families about what we're seeing in the building, learning more about what the family is experiencing, what the student's experiencing, or maybe demonstrating at home, to then receive consent, to proceed with these programs that actually exist. So we will not move forward with a bridge program referral if the family does not consent. We do not move forward with a base referral if the family does not consent, and the same with rapid response, and those individualized plans that you saw for communities and schools, and even some of those supports cannot happen without famili- family support. So that's where the partnership, on the front end, with several meetings on that front end, to then put in appropriate supports and resources for the student, occurs. And then from the disciplinary guideline standpoint, there may be additional conversations about, I know do occur, but Mr. Delaney can share a little bit more about that.
But I'd also like to, there's a couple of things that I, Mr. Jamison shared earlier, I think are really important when you're reading the packet and you're looking through it. We're talking tier one and tier three interventions, so if you remember that pyramid that he showed a couple of months ago. So when you look at those bottom four or five programs that were discussed, those are all tier three. Smaller number of students being serviced, so that's sometimes why you hear staff not knowing it exists. Lives with the school counselor, lives with the administrator, the school social worker. Oftentimes, the sc- the teacher is not directly involved continually in that process. When you look at things like BIST, and, and you heard, uh, Ms. Silverman, who's an expert on Title One, we do those in Title One schools with the resources they provide, the family night events that go along with it. Uh, and we try to utilize those type, that type of program to enhance the communication that goes on on that end. But again, broadly speaking, we have expectations in every school, if there's behavioral issues, the parent is involved in that process and needs to understand their role in helping correct.
When I applaud the family nights, um, that, that, I think it's incredibly important to ensure that we are working as a family as a whole, um, to, you know, continue the good work in, uh, behavior and, and expectations, so thank you.
And from an outreach standpoint, you're gonna hear a little bit about this at the Academic and Career Planning Update in December. That's exactly why we continue to have tables for these programs at events such as College Night, or Information Shared at Academy Night. And it, it's passive, in the sense of you can walk by the table, pick up the pamphlet, should it be appropriate for your family, you now have that information with a higher level of awareness, maybe pass that on to a family that you're, you're close within the community over the weekend. So we're continuing those same outreach efforts, and as you heard from the recommendations, there'll be more to come in that regard.
Ms. Weems?
Yes, thank you so much. Yeah, there, there's a lot here. And I know I attended the Mental Health Task Force, and, and we, my table really discussed the middle school and some gaps, and I'm, I'm glad that, of course, that we're, we're working at every level. Um, the base program, so twenty-five percent of parents, only twenty-five, said the transition back to students' homeschool was successful. So that causes a little bit of pause that leads to my question. If a child goes to the base program and stays six weeks, correct?
Usually nine, nine weeks.
Nine weeks, and returns, does the child ever go back to the base program if the transition back is not successful?
We have not had students return back to the base pro, just to limit the number of transitions for the student. From an eight, and as you saw, K through two, and when they've already been gone for nine weeks, we try not to have them return for a short period of time, and then be out again for an extended period of time. Is it off the table? No. Um, but at this point, we have not had to do that. We have leveraged other supports that were more recently in place last year with our elementary student support specialists, who then are, are working with students transitioning from base to their comprehensive school, and are literally with them. We set a minimum of two days, it's more like five to ten days, and we're seeing a lot of benefits of using that approach.
And I know we have a lot of, you know, supports in place, but I, I think it's just overwhelming the behavioral challenges of specifically kindergarten and first graders. I mean, that's all I hear from teachers, is how much, how, how aggressive and how disruptive, and it's not just your comment, it's like, I mean, violent behavior. Um, for an example, one Saturday, the week before election, I was working the polls, and it was so slow, 'cause there was a two-hour wait, that I got to talk to people, 'cause a lot, and so when I found out there was a teacher, I'm like, give me feedback. So that Saturday, I know it was, it's only five, but I got feedback from five elementary teachers, and they all said, y'all have got to do something with the behavior of kindergarten and first graders. One of them said her friend just quit the week before because she was tired of being bitten. Uh, I, she, this one teacher said, I can't even wear short sleeves to school anymore because I've got so many bite marks. Um, they said, you, you, and then, oh, and then I talked to two security SROs in elementary, so that's, this is seven people. Um, they said, I feel so sorry for the teachers, 'cause we removed the child, they go to wherever they're supposed to get the resources, then I have to take that child back, the next day I remove the child from the class, then I have to tell that teacher the child's coming back, over and over again, and this S R said, I just feel so sorry for the teacher. Um, and I know we're trying, and I don't have the answer, and I know you're trying so much, and I know it probably has something to do with COVID, and this is the first group, I guess, kindergarteners. But it's just, I mean, we're just losing. Teachers, I mean, the, the frustration of these young, wonderful kindergarten and first grade teachers was very, very sad. Um, I don't know if you have any comments for that, but the, but the aggressive, and, and this one teacher said, you know, I, I watched this child just destroy all my bins, all my, you know, bins of stuff that I had, and then he or she did it again two days later. And then again, I don't, I didn't have an answer for her.
And, and many times, as you can imagine, emails come through my inbox, phone calls are made to our office, and we discuss those situations. And, and the, the truth of the matter is, is that change takes time. And a lot of times, I know that's an answer where people go, I need it fixed now. I'm sure you do. At the same time, um, that's where we've explored, and again, with your support, we're adding in those positions that can support teachers directly. So we've added more behavior intervention specialists. We've converted positions that were unfilled in one department that are now ten elementary student support specialists, who can go out and provide additional support. We have more school counselors, I heard the ratio mentioned earlier from ASCA. We are well below that ratio, we have more school counselors in Virginia Beach. I'm not saying that all of those pieces fix the issue, I'm not. But as you see additional supports come through, we're up to three hundred seventy-six BIST referrals, we were at two eighty, a similar time last year. Teachers have the ability to then work with staff who can then support them in that moment. Is it going to change things in a day? No. Is it gonna change it in a, in a year? No. But we are going to see the lasting impacts of things that occurred previously for a little bit of time. And I think as we have these supports in place, being leveraged to full capacity, with professional learning attached to that, to build the capacity of our teachers, it's not the teacher's fault, wanna be really clear on that, but ensuring that they're equipped to respond with some impactful strategies, we are in a better place. We are seeing improvement now, and it's just gonna take additional time to see a larger improvement. But I do believe we're on the right path, from a staffing standpoint, a professional learning standpoint, leadership standpoint, and we're prioritizing those needs in the decisions that we're making.
Yeah, I, I know, and there's, you know, if we only had a magical wand, I, I do understand that. Of the fifty-five elementary schools, what percentage would you say have everything that they need? You know, because some, some of them are pilot programs, and some we've just started, I mean, is it ten percent, is it, 'cause you say we're on the right path? Like, what percentage do you think, or?
That they have everything that they need.
Well, or, or, not everything. Not everything, but like, like, is there a certain percentage of when we're piloting this, okay, those ten schools are pretty good, and now we gotta do the next ten, the next ten, like we do other programs?
I think, I think the best answer I can provide to that is what you see during league meetings, so when all elementary school principals are going to get together tomorrow. And when they have conversations about the, a problem of practice, usually sometimes it's about behavior. And you hear the different approaches that are being used, it's a variety of answers based on the community that you're serving. And so, for example, BIST works extremely well at Parkway Elementary School. It has been a sigh of relief for their staff. Katie Catania will tell you, the teachers feel empowered, that they have a straightforward approach that they can use that's consistent, and they're seeing benefits in their community. She has shared that information in her community, so you do have more family buy-in in the Parkway area. That same approach may not be applicable over at Three Oaks. So you're gonna see and hear different things, but the combination, from a staffing standpoint, we have one school leader that decided they were going to change one of their allocations to have an additional school counselor, and they're seeing great benefits from doing that. Not everybody has that same opportunity, 'cause it depends, again, on your numbers and your allocations. They were in a position where they could make that decision. So collectively, percentage-wise, I'm not going to answer your question. Because, but because, I think each school would give you a level of satisfaction of what they do have based on how they've seen the interactions with their students and families. So I believe, back to my pathway, that had you asked this question three years ago, that we'd be hovering most likely in that sixty percent range. I think if you were to ask school leaders now, we're more at the ninety percent range, eighty-five to ninety percent of the situations can be addressed based on what they have in their building. But to your point from earlier, that still doesn't change the fact that there might be a small number of students with challenging behaviors that we're still trying to find the right mix of supports to address.
Yeah, that's tough. Well, I appreciate your, all your work, Mr. Jamison, you do an awesome job, thank you.
Ms. Kendrick?
I just wanna say that I'm so very proud to be part of a division that puts so much emphasis, care, concern, and, um, resources towards behaviors and mental health support. I don't know of, um, if there's another division that's doing it like we are trying to do it. Granted, it's just year one that you're evaluating the results from what you've been trying to implement from the six different initiatives, but, um, I'm just so very proud to see this and to hear your passion and, and all of, all of the work that the administration has done, um, towards this. And, um, this data is, is just great, as my colleagues have said, it's a lot of data, but I love data. Um, so much so that I wanna ask for more data, even though I won't be here to read it. But I think it would be helpful for my colleagues to have, um, when you do your next survey, if we can have more of a concentrated, um, report on the responses from parents. I know, I know that it's so hard to get parent participation and feedback from parents. And it does appear that you did try to get surveys in all of the six areas, but unfortunately, we just have two, uh, responses for two of the initiatives. Um, but I do think it would be very, um, informative for us, because, you know, the parents are our bosses. So, um, if we can just get more of a, a section, maybe, a section on just what parents have to say, um, and findings from parents. Um, we got a lot of general prescriptions from, perceptions from the staff, which is very helpful. Uh, but I think in the future, having more, um, a concentrated area on just responses from the parent surveys would be amazing. And I know that in the future, we're gonna get more responses from the parents, because as you said, you're trying, you're seeing what works where, and I, and you're getting great feedback, and you're willing to say, you know what, this might not work so well here, but let's try that. So you're rolling up your sleeves, you're doing the work, and I know that you're gonna get so much positive feedback from these amazing efforts. So I just wanna thank you and make that suggestion.
Thank you for that suggestion, and thank you for the feedback.
And Mr. Cowan?
I think it's pretty clear that all of us up here, although we are members of the board, are really just students in class. Because this is a subject matter that is very deep, very substantive, filled with all sorts of responses and reports, and as Ms. Manning was saying a moment ago, it just makes you wonder, are we doing the right thing as we try to address so many of these behavioral issues? And let's just put it under the banner of social and emotional learning, for one way of framing it. Uh, it's a complex subject, it's filled with different methodologies that are being employed. And every once in a while, you have to just step back and ask yourself, are we going down the right path relative to the solutions that we're trying to come up with? Or what might we be heading in an unknown but wrong direction? So I try to read as much as I possibly can of the material that's made available here for us as board members, but also out in the marketplace, if I am aware of something that can be instructive, I try to put my hands on it and make myself aware of it. Earlier this year, there was another book on the bestsellers list for the New York Times addressing the issue of why aren't the kids growing up? It was written by an investigative journalist, and again, it was on the bestsellers list for several weeks. So I got myself a copy and thought this might be an opportunity for me to deepen my understanding of this issue that we're wrestling with. Bear with me while I read you a little over a page and a half, just to set the stage. It makes reference to an interview that the author is having with a gentleman who is a professor of psychiatry, and the question goes like this. There's an even bigger problem with asking kids over and over to reflect on their feelings, under the banner of social and emotional learning. How are you feeling today seems to be the theme that gets applied. There's an even bigger problem with asking kids over and over to reflect on their feelings. It has to do with psychological orientation. Psychologists have studied the states of mind that tend to make us more successful, whatever the challenge that presents itself. There are at least two we can adopt, either an action orientation and a state orientation. And a state orientation. Adopting an action orientation means focusing on the task ahead with no thoughts to your current emotional or physical state. A state orientation means you're thinking principally about yourself. How prepared you feel in that moment, the worry you feel over a text that was left unanswered. The right prickling at the the light prickling at the back of your throat, that crick blossoming in your neck. Adopting an action orientation, it turns out. Makes it much more likely that you accomplish the task. You just set your sights on the task ahead of you. Our best coaches, Mister Delaney, Mister Robertson, you've been there. Our best coaches know this instinctively. Consider the way they motivate a team before the game. We can do this, they say. Wiggins, you're gonna cover number eleven like you're his shadow. Tyler, watch the penalties. Defense, you're gonna put relentless pressure on their quarterback. I wanna see hurries and sacks. Offense, heads up, stay composed, nice clean blocks, focus, focus, focus. On the task ahead. They do not say, let's take a moment to hear how each of you is feeling. Tyler, we'll start with you. Are you still bummed about your parents divorce? If you wanna win, if you wanna accomplish anything, among the worst things you can do, this professor of psychiatry says. Is attend to your disappointments, your discomforts and your painful relates, excuse me, painful relationships right now. No winning head coach asks his player to consider their feelings at halftime. Because thinking about yourself. Which again seems to be the underlying theme of social and emotional learning. How are you feeling? Thinking about yourself shatters your ability to get things done. State orientation keeps you being from successful in anything, the professor said. I'll close with these last few statements. I asked the professor what he would expect to see in a society where kids were constantly encouraged to heed their feelings. His answer was, if you start your day by asking yourself whether you're happy, the result can only be that you're not happy. And then you think you need help to become happy. And then you go to psychotherapist and he'll make you really unhappy in the end. But why can't the answer always be, I'm happy professor? And here's his answer and I'll close. Because it will never be true. And time spent answering this question only pushes us further from any tangible goal. And the satisfaction of having completed a tangible goal. I offer this only to say, we're trying to understand. This concept called social and emotional learning. And due to the investigative results of this journalist. It just causes us to hear all these reports and wonder about all the data that we're receiving and ask ourselves the question. Could it possibly be we're heading in the wrong direction? Although we're doubling down with hundreds of thousands of dollars on these programs. This is, this is not, in any respect, an accusation of any sorts. This is merely a question to say, geez. It at least causes me to stop and think about it. Thank you for your time.
No problem. I would like to share though. Much of what you just shared in terms of the action orientation is what school is about. And it is what educators are doing. And it's the exact same language as to why students who may come in with the be belief. Well, I can't do well in math, end up doing well in math. It's because they have teachers who are showing them that they can do well in math. They're not asking them how they're feeling about mathematics. They do the work. Same thing with any of our subject areas, but especially reading and writing being two of prominence right now. So I just wanna be clear that the programs that we're talking about tonight are not state oriented. They are responsive in nature when a need has been shown that we need, that that requires a response. From the trusted adults in their lives. So we are focused on action specifically for our students. To ensure that they can then be successful moving forward. Yes, sir.
Okay, and with that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not gonna lie, I'm really excited about our next presentation because this was teased a little while ago. And we're gonna hear about seven new courses. Um, and we welcome Mister Thomas Quinn, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. And Doctor Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Education. Welcome.
Thank you for the kind words. I'll go ahead and begin. Good evening Chair Wimeldek, Vice Chair Franklin and Members of the School Board and Doctor Robertson. As mentioned, I am Tom Quinn, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. With me is Doctor Sarah Lockett, Director of Technical and Career Education. We are here to provide you with information regarding a series of proposed new courses to be implemented in the fall of twenty twenty five. Each course is designed to offer equity and access to rigorous coursework for all students. While supporting the three post-secondary options of enrollment, enlistment and employment. The first course up for your consideration is titled Freshmen Transition Strategies. This one credit course is designed to support freshmen, specifically first-time ninth graders with the transition to high school. Research shows the transition to high school can be one of the most significant developmental experiences. If a student fails to integrate effectively into the school environment, they are more likely to engage in chronic absenteeism. Or possibly become a high school dropout. With an understanding that freshmen may struggle with the academic rigor of high school, developmental behaviors. And attendance and a social emotional needs, we believe is essential to provide a course dedicated. To ensuring a smooth transition to high school and one that goes beyond the traditional study block. Designed with a focus on building the resilience and confidence of the individual student. This course will focus on the enhancement of peer-to-peer and teacher-to-peer relationships. Support with social and emotional learning needs, engagement in understanding the impact of organization on success. Learn about effective leadership traits and self-reflection strategies that support academic and career planning. This course aligns with the graduate profile and the Avid system, making it the optimal alternative to study block for freshmen. Thus casting a wider net, support net beyond that of the Avid elective. Initially, sites for implementation were to be selected based on GPA and AP enrollment data. But after careful discussion, the team decided it was best, in the best interest to offer this course division-wide. In terms of budget and staffing impact, this course can use existing staff and resources. On this slide, you'll see a snapshot of the various topics that will be both differentiated and scaffolded to meet the readiness level. Of first-time ninth graders. Through exploration and application of these topics, students will focus on the essential skills needed to foster greater levels of student agency. Ensure academic, a rigorous academic preparedness. And gain exposure to opportunity knowledge related to enrollment in university, enlistment in the military or employment in the workforce. Before taking questions, I will now turn the presentation over to Doctor Sarah Lockett. To share proposals on several new and exciting career and technical elective courses.
Thank you. Good evening. Introduction to Welding is the first of, first of six new CTE course proposals and is tied to high wage, high demand shipbuilding industry. As you all know, we recently doubled the size of the welding program at the Virginia Beach Technical and Career Education Center from forty seats to eighty. This was phase one of creating a robust workforce pipeline in this industry. This fall, we are ready to take a look at next steps to again expand capacity for welding to meet student and industry demand. This new one-credit course for eleventh and twelfth graders begins that phase two expansion. It will be offered at the Renaissance Academy Building, but will be open to students from across the division. The course will be scheduled similarly to our CTE center schedules with morning and afternoon sessions. High school sites will be clustered to minimize busing. For example, the morning session in one semester might see only students from Landstown, Salem and Tallwood High Schools. While the afternoon session might see students from Bayside Cox and First Colonial. Students enrolled in the course will use one block for class and a second for travel. Students from the Renaissance Academy will also be guaranteed seats in each class. A new full-time welding instructor will need to be hired to teach the program at a mid-range cost of just over a hundred thousand dollars. Additional budget impacts include approximately forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars for busing. And five thousand dollars from a year for consumable materials. The total estimated yearly budget impact is one hundred and fifty-five thousand and forty-four dollars. This course and associated costs are a requirement to move forward with accepting an estimated two point five million dollars in funding. From the regional maritime training system to renovate lab space, build locker rooms and purchase all equipment related to the program. In addition to expanding our capacity to introduce high school students to welding, this course and the related funding. Will allow the Adult Learning Center to offer welding and maritime training to adult learners in our city. The second CTE course proposal moves from sea to air. In a new partnership with the Aviation Institute of Maintenance, it is proposed that we begin to offer dual enrollment. Aviation Maintenance One and Two in the fall of twenty twenty-five. Enrolled students will work with airframe and control surfaces, power plants and basic aviation electricity. And perform ground operations and servicing procedures as specified by the Federal Aviation Administration requirements. Students will also practice lab and tool safety, apply science and mathematics principles to aviation maintenance tasks. And research and use maintenance publications, forms and records during this double-blocked two-year program. The program will serve twenty eleventh and twelfth grade students at Bayside and Princess Anne High Schools. The proximity of the Aviation Institute of Maintenance to these sites makes them a logical choice. To minimize busing and offer a much-needed opportunity on this side of the city. The double-blocked two-year program will run on the same schedule as the CTE centers and students can earn six high school credits and eighteen college credits. This equates appro- approximately one-third of the coursework required to become a licensed aircraft technician. Students enrolled in this program will support the three E accreditation standard in two ways by earning dual enrollment credit. And as a CTE completer with an industry credential. Virginia Beach schools will not hire new staff for this program. Instead, we ask to fully fund the hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year. To enroll forty students with the Aviation Institute of Maintenance that covers a year one and a year two, so twenty for each year. The only additional expense related is. Is related to busing students to the program and is estimated a hundred and seventeen thousand. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. The only additional expenses related relate to busing students from the targeted schools to the program. The cost per year one of the program is an estimated one hundred and seventeen eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. As there will be no second-year students that first year. The cost at capacity is an estimated two hundred and forty-three thousand and sixty-nine dollars per year. Just a few miles from the Aviation Institute of Maintenance is the Norfolk Campus of Centura College. To further meet the need to have career training in District Four. It is proposed that dual enrollment medical assisting one and two also be offered with the Centura organization. Virginia Beach Schools has a robust allied health programs at the Tech Center. And they include licensed practical nursing, medical office administration, pharmacy tech and dental assisting. However, we do not offer training for the high-demand medical assisting field. Offering this program at Centura College for eleventh and twelfth grade students at Bayside and Princess Anne High Schools. Again expands needed training and leverages buses that are already transporting students to the Aviation Institute of Maintenance. Students will earn six high school credits and thirty-six college credits in this double-blocked two-year program. Again, supporting the three E accreditation standard through dual enrollment and a new completer pathway. The total cost. For year one of the program is an estimated sixty thousand dollars with an ongoing cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And that leaves all of the busing quoted in the first figure for Aviation Institute of Maintenance, but it is the same busing. The four CTE course proposal shifts our focus back to our traditional partnership with Tidewater Community College. For a dual-enrolled emergency medical service career study certificate. Students who choose DE Emergency Medical Services One and Two gain foundational knowledge in basic anatomy and physiology, pharmacology. Medical ethics, medical asepsis, medical terminology, medical mathematics and legal responsibilities. Students also develop basic skills and techniques to assist the healthcare provider and or other medical professional. Professionals in patient examinations, basic emergency care, simple laboratory tests and administrative duties. This program is for students who are interested in becoming emergency medical technicians or in emergency medicine in general. Classes will run on the morning CTE center schedule with twenty seats available to eleventh and twelfth grade students across the city. Enrolled students will earn three high school credits and eleven college credits during this one-year program. There is no impact on staffing as TCC faculty will teach the course. The budget's impact for offering this new course is approximately forty-five hundred dollars per year. At this time, it is anticipated that busing to the Virginia Beach Campus of Tidewater Community College and the Advanced Technology Center is adequate. But the estimated cost to expand busing is twelve thousand dollars per bus should an individual school's enroll. Enrollment exceed what is currently available on the ATC routes. The next CTE course proposal is dual enrollment paralegal one and two, again with Tidewater Community College. Students who choose DE Paralegal One and Two gain foundational knowledge in various areas of law. While preparing for employment in the legal field, students gain knowledge and skills in legal document preparation, office communications, legal terminology. Client services, record management, financial records and business eh, business ethics. Successful completion of this program may lead to an entry-level position in law enforcement, court offices, law enforcement agency. Corporate legal department or to further post-secondary education. Classes will run on the morning CTE center schedule with twenty-five seats available to eleventh and twelfth grade students across the city. Enrolled students will again earn three high school credits, but this time twelve college credits during this one-year program. There is no impact on staffing as TCC faculty will teach the course. The budget impact for offering this new. Program is approximately six thousand dollars per year. The final new course proposal for CTE is dual-enrolling our current renewable energy one and two courses at the Advanced Technology Center. This shift recognizes the college-level work that students in this program are already doing. The program will continue to offer six high school credits and add four college credits for students. There are no staffing or budget impacts for making this change as the faculty of the course is already employed by Virginia City Beach City Public Schools. As with each dual enrollment opportunity shared this evening, the change supports the three E accreditation standard. Thank you, and at this time, Mister Quinn and I are happy to answer any questions that you all have about these seven courses.
Well, see, I told you. It's amazing. Um, Ms. Kendrick. Super excited about this. This is amazing. You're right, you're right. Okay, so I have a few questions. So for the welding program, you. Thank you, and we're just so excited that we were able to increase from the forty to the eighty seats. Um, where, did you say that we're gonna be adding more seats to the eighty?
Well, so right now, when we look at enrollments at the Tech Center. We have about a hundred and fifty applications a year, sorry, a hundred and fifty applications a year. Um, for those forty seats, which means this year we left a hundred and ten kids without a placement in a welding program. Um, what this does with the one-credit introduction to welding, it it is just a one semester four-by-four class, one credit. It's gonna allow us to offer seats to seniors who might not get a a place at the Tech Center because they won't come back for a second. For the second year of that program. It's gonna offer them intensive um, access to our shipbuilding partners in the region. Um, to be part of that pipeline. So it is only a one-credit class, so it's welding light compared to what they get at the Tech Center. But it opens up a couple of things. Number one, it's a lot less of a commute from a student who may live on that side of the city. The other piece is it um, allows a student who may not have time in their schedule to dedicate two years to the Tech Center. To at least really say, is this something I'm interested in? Because we know that our partners will continue to give training to these students post-graduation. But it gives them that opportunity.
Great, and you also mentioned that you're designating some seats for the Renaissance Academy? Can you please expound on that? How many seats are you setting aside for Renaissance students?
So I I think that really depends on demand, but um, when I had talked to Mister Miller at the, at the Renaissance Academy, his feeling is that. He would need three or four seats per semester. Um, and students would have to, of course, elect to stay there for the whole semester to finish that or they could go back and ride the bus back and forth. They would have some of those options. Um, so that's kind of our thought is that he he needs that three to four, but I think it really depends on demand. Um, overall where the demand is coming from. Of course, our goal is to fill every seat and give as many kids an opportunity as possible.
Yes, indeed, and um, you didn't mention anything about certificates regarding the welding program, and I get it, it's just one credit. But is there some sort of um, certificate of completion or something that our seniors or juniors could get?
They are a, they obviously like any CTE course, they can sit for their workplace and ready this exam. We also do our OSHA ten safety cards, which is, uh, not recom- recognized as a graduation requirement. But our industry partners across industry, industry. Agree that that is useful to kids to come in with that OSHA card, and so we're doing that in a lot of places. We're doing it in our one-hour construction classes at the high school. We're doing it in a lot of our tech center programs. Um, but what we hear from business and industry is if you have a kid with an OSHA card, I'll hire them. So that, that is, you know, a focus for us.
Very good. Okay, moving on to slide six, the, um, medical assisting, one and two. My sister is in our end, she's watching from Scottsdale, Arizona. Gotta shout out to my sister, um, Tasha. But, um, this sort of, is there a certification for this program? I know that with the six credits that we're offering. With the aviation maintenance, uh, offering that we're doing, we're offering a license as an aircraft technician. What are we doing with the medical assisting? What kind of certification will our students get?
So just to be clear, for the aviation maintenance, they'll only finish a third of that program. Two-thirds would have to be finished post-graduation. Um, but for the medical assisting, we, when we really looked at it, it's a thirty-six credit certificate program, including all their licensing. And, and their industry credential test, and the feeling from Centura was if we could get those kids there half a day every day for two years. They can finish the thirty, thirty-six credits. So it is the tire, they will walk out ready to work, medical assistance. Which is helpful to go straight to work. It's also helpful if you're then gonna go into a nursing program, you've got that credential, you can go to work and start getting experience right away.
And I love that it's in my district four. That's beautiful, too. Um, I think that is all the questions I have. Again, great job on this. This is so exciting. Thank you. Ms. Weems.
Thank you.
Thank you, oh, Dr. Lockett. Thank you, thank you.
Um, I think this is just, you know, um, evidence that these three groups that we formed together. That really, we decided a year ago that we were just gonna really go for these trades and really offer up new opportunities. I know two years ago, um, during the campaign, that's all I heard. You know, we need more trades, we need more, um, you know, skill, workforce. Um, cause not everybody's going to college and, and, um, you know, the data that shows how many kids go to college and actually finish. And actually get a job with what they graduated in, it, it's very low. And I've got some of those at my under, that used to be under my roof, that fall in that category. Um, but anyway, so this is so exciting because they are going to be, you know, ready, like you said, to get a job, not just a job, but a career. And they're gonna make good money. They're gonna make very good money. And, you know, it used to be either or, but in certain, a lot of these cases. They don't have to go either or, they can get this certification and then finish, you know, at college. So, so it just opens up an opportunity. One of the favorite things that I like about this is we've opened up the opportunity on, on our side of the city. On, on the Bayside Princess Anne, what I lovingly call the Bayside area. So, um, that's right. And so, because it's a hard sell to get some of these kids to drive from Bayside High School or Princess Anne all the way out to North Landing. And then all the way back to play their sport. I mean, it's a, it's a big sacrifice and it's, it's not that easy. So I'm super excited. I'm super excited about what, what we're offering right there by the airport for the aviation and all that stuff. And, um, I'm just, I'm just excited. I can't wait till these kids go through that and ta- and come back and tell us that at the age of twenty-three, they're making. You know, ninety thousand dollars a year. I love it. Thank you so much.
That's awesome. Ms. Brown?
Um, wait a minute, some, something happened. It says I'm speaking now. Oh, yeah.
Ms. Brown.
Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate all of these. I'm very, very excited. Um, you know, back when I campaigned, all I heard was workforce development. Um, and so I think that we're doing a really great job as a division. Um, you know, starting to, um, meet more of the demands. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I feel like most of the questions, um, I had were already asked. It's okay, it's okay, it's okay. Um, I, I do have a question, though, about the guaranteed, um, Renaissance seats, and I just wanna make sure. When, when we're guaranteeing those seats, we're gonna be certain that those are students, um. That are, um, participating and, um.
So, so when, if you think about a welding lab and the, and the equipment that's in there. Um, i- it is a place where student behavior, the, the bar is up here, um, just for safety of all students. So I, I, I think you can count on the admin team, um, over at Renaissance Academy to work with students to make sure that they understand the importance of being in there. And what an opportunity is for them to change kind of the tra- trajectory of their, you know, their life and their career. So, um, I, I have full confidence in the team over there making sure that, that we're making good choices and to be proactive if there are issues to address those. Cause it, 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 it's, you know, real equipment, it, it will be an exact mirror image pretty much of what you see at the tech center. The, the equipment is the same as, as what you all that visited the tech center when we opened that. It, it, it's the same level. Same equipment, same cost. Um, it's just a shorter duration.
Okay, great. That is very good. I just wanted to confirm that. Um, and then my other question is related to the freshman transition course. Thank you. Um, so I know that you mentioned that this is for incoming, first-time ninth graders. But is this, um, an elective course? Um, and so my, my question really is, is, you know, last year we had, um, some challenges. With certain, um, music and arts classes, um, getting the enrollment needed to make. And I'm curious if adding another, uh, course such as this one is going to make. Um, the musics and hearts, arts harder to, um, fill.
So it would not. Uh, it's designed to only replace study block. So you've got, you have the avid elective's gonna capture a certain group of students. You're gonna have certain group of students who, study block is perfect for them. I've got one of them at home. You know, she uses her time as an athlete and that's when she knocks her stuff out. And then you have kids who really need that additional guidance and support as they transition from being eighth grade. To ninth grade, there's some dramatic changes that can happen between that summer. Uh, so this is designed to capture those kids and provide them the structure, guidance, and support they would need. That a less structured study block's not gonna provide, but yet possibly the avid elective is not the best fit for them. So just gives you another optimal alternative that we think, uh, would be best suited.
Okay, great. Um, and then I guess the other question I have is, you know, how are we going to measure? Uh, the success of it over time and the enrollment over time to ensure that it's, um, something we will continue.
So I think it'll be, um, connecting, visiting the sites that are having it, and a little feedback from students and staff. Uh, much like you collect data on anything, um, taking a look at enrollment, you know, seeing it firsthand, observation feedback from principals and assistant principals. I think talking to counselors, working with, uh, Mr. Jameson in his office. You know, I think a, a full three sixty review is gonna tell us if we found something that is really hitting that target to help kids transition more successfully. Um, you know, that'd be kind of the, the initial marker that we would use.
And is this gonna be offered in every high school or just a few select high schools?
Uh, it's gonna be offered division-wide. We initially looked at schools that had lower GPA and AP enrollment data as initial, and then through careful discussion as a team. We just said, you know what, this kid exists at every school, let's offer it. If they end up getting enough to roster it, that will be a site-based decision. But it will be offered to every school or available.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Lockett. I, I agree with Ms. Weems. It is a hard sell for the kids who are on the north end of the city to have to drive all the way to the southern end of the city. To get in some of these classes, and I really appreciate the fact that you even acknowledged that tonight. Um, so having some of these, um, these, uh, career and technical classes on the north end of the city. Is really, really a boost, in my opinion. Um, I do have a question. Where did you say the, uh, Aviation Maintenance? One and two is going to be held? Where is that?
It is, and I'm, I'm gonna think, I believe it's Little Creek Road in Norfolk. Dr. Robertson can attest to the fact that I should not be in charge of directions to get anywhere. I may have taken him on a goose chase or two. Um, but it's only a few miles from Bayside High School.
Okay, alright, so, and there'll be buses to take the kids there?
Yes, so we worked with, uh, JT Lash and Chuck Blair and the team over in transportation. Um, to look at having, in the first year, it would just be one bus that would pick students up at Bayside. If we, if we fill it with both, it would be Bayside and PA, so there would be two buses. They would pick students up at that high school, they would take them first to the Aviation Institute of Maintenance and drop off the students there. They would then drive to three miles up the road to Centura College, drop off the medical assisting students, and then the opposite on the way back to school. Um, so we got the, the costs, worked with transportation to get those costs for the busing for just those buses. And that, and that's part of limiting it. When you think about the small number of seats, um, that, you know. If we start looking at buses from all over the city, that's like busing on a grand scale that, like we do for the tech center. And, and so it made sense, um, to offer that opportunity on that side of the city.
Okay, and Dr. Spence, do you see any problem with? I don't think you can. That was a great, great comeback. Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Doc- Dr. Robertson, I don't know where my mind was right now. Do you see any problem with, um, budget for any of these things in the future?
No, I mean, it, the board has made it very clear over the last two years, the focus of workforce development, and city as well. And so, um, I'm, in, in the Virginia Beach Community Roundtable meeting, the last one we had. We got, I got a direct question, what do you need? And I said, well, be careful what you ask for, cause when we have our next meeting on Monday, I'm gonna tell them I'm looking for sponsorships. So then I'll let you know, Ms. Weems, so you could target your group, too. Uh, because if, what I'm gonna propose to them as a match. We have X amount of seats we wanna fill, would you be willing to sponsor half of the seats? We'll cover the other half. I think there's gonna be interest because the costs are not exorbitant. Uh, we'll obviously have to cover the cost of transportation, but, um, there's a willingness in the community to provide support for this. But it's a, it's a priority because the board has made it a priority, and it's the right thing to do.
And I just wanna add that the, the programs are a bargain. If you look at the cost just to hire one teacher. Not to mention setting up a lab, maintaining equipment, accrediting, um, some of these programs are complicated, you know. The, the hours that our staff spends working on those accreditations, i- i- it, it really is a great value for the division, in my opinion.
Thank you.
So will you have the opportunity at some point, um, if, if the board chooses to pass this? Um, to present this to city council to let them know at some point where we are and what we're doing? I mean, it doesn't have to be right after we vote, but, you know, maybe for the start of the next school year that they know. Um, where we've gone with this, with the, with the two, uh, roundtable groups and.
Well, we have two city council members on ours, so they could go back to theirs, too.
Dr. Robertson does as well.
Yeah, we have Worth Remick on ours as well.
Okay, we'll get, we'll make sure that word gets out. Okay, alright.
And if anyone's interested in our general advisory council, in February, we're gonna do it at the Aviation Institute of Maintenance. So there's an opportunity to see it.
That's awesome. Thank you. Alright, so moving on to the consent agenda. Um, I've had a request to move Kellum High School turf field replacement to action, so please remove A. And so this evening for the consent agenda, we have the Tallwood High School track and field improvements. Religious exemptions, resolutions celebrating Thanksgiving Day, and a special recognition for interim school board member. Shannon Kendrick of District Four. Um, so, um. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, of course, minus, um, item A. Motion made by, um, Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Riggs. Um, Mr. Culpepper, would you like to read your resolution for Thanksgiving Day?
Absolutely. Whereas Thanksgiving Day is one of our nation's most beloved holidays, observed for centuries as a time to pause and give thanks to God for his many blessings. And whereas the actual, uh, first Thanksgiving was held in sixteen nineteen in Berkeley Hundred, Virginia, where Captain John Woodleaf. And thirty-seven Englishmen offered thanks to God for safe passage across the Atlantic. And whereas President George Washington in seventeen eighty-nine declared Thursday, the twenty-sixth of November. To be, quote, "to be devoted to the service of that great and glorious being who is the beneficent author of all the good there was, that is, or that will be." Close quote. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln in eighteen sixty-three declared a national holiday on the last Thursday in November. Quote, "As a day of Thanksgiving and praise to our beneficent Father who dwells in the heavens." And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach and its public schools have much to be thankful for, including the industrious. And prosperous community which has abundantly provided for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, its students and families. Now therefore be it resolved. Virginia Beach City Public Schools and its offices will be closed on November twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. In observance of the national holiday of Thanksgiving, and to provide Virginia Beach families with an opportunity for time with family, friends, and loved ones. And to give thanks to our Creator for our abundant blessings. And be it further resolved, we call this observance the attention of our division, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. Adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach on this twelfth day of November, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Culpepper. Okay, Ms. Kendrick, since you already announced that your sister's watching from Scottsdale, Arizona. Um, if you wouldn't mind terribly, um, standing in front of Mrs. Lynetti. Who would like your cell phone, by the way, so she can take some pictures for you. Um, if you would stand with, uh, Dr. Robertson, otherwise known as Dr. Spence. While we honor you for your, um, commitments, um, to this school board for the past eight months. And so it is great, with great pride, that I read the resolution for Shannon Kendrick, interim school board member, District Four. Whereas Virginia Beach City, oh, we missed that. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner. Who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas through the governance and oversight of the school board of the city of Virginia Beach, and the leadership of the superintendent and staff. Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students. School board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world. And work tirelessly to address those needs. And whereas Shannon L. Kendrick was sworn in as the interim school board member, District Four. And fulfilled her duties as a school board member from March until November, twenty twenty-four. And whereas during her time as the interim school board member, Ms. Kendrick was an advocate for the needs of District Four students and families. And an avid participant in many school functions. Ms. Kendrick used her unique experience with local, state, and federal governments to bring awareness of educational needs to the attention of the community. And its representatives. Whereas Ms. Kendrick served with distinction on numerous committees, including student discipline and the legislative committee. And now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Shannon Kendrick. Interim School Board Member, District Four, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this school board. And be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Shannon Kendrick, interim school board member, District Four. In recognition of her service. This resolution is adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this. Does it say tenth? Twelfth day of December, twenty twenty-four. Okay, so again, the motion was made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Riggs. The voting board is open.
Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, so the motion did pass for the consent agenda.
Thank you. Okay, um. Under action this evening, we start with the personnel report, um. And administrative appointments. I call for a motion to approve the November twelfth Personnel Report Administrative Motion, um, Appointments. Motion made by Jen- Jennifer Franklin, seconded by Ms. Owens. Um, any discussion? Alright, seeing none, the voting board is open.
Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, so the motion did pass for the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments.
Okay, I call for a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty- Okay, I call for a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty.
Point of order, Madam Chair, there is a administrative recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look to the right, okay. Alright, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm pleased tonight that you've accepted our recommendation for Erin Mullins. Currently an instructional specialist in the Department of Teaching and Learning. To be the new coordinator of secondary English in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Thank you.
Yay, congratulations. Okay, now I will call for a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. Calendars. Motion made by. Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Any discussion?
Ms. Melnick, I think there were two things that you guys asked us to bring back this time, if you'd like me to address those now.
I do have a note for that. Um, yes, we'll hold on questions until Mr. Delaney.
Alright, thank you. Just wanted to share on the screen here that you see on November fourth, twenty twenty-five is now Flex Day, that's the election day. And November third, twenty twenty-six is the election day Flex Day. So that was the request. At the last meeting, could we make those a Flex Day? So I just wanted you to know that that correction's been made. We then look at the end of the year, that Thursday in-service week, so the question that came along on that, we had had a conversation around the impact on testing. And the testing schedule. Uh, we do not make the testing schedule until the calendar is done. And recognize around that time, what is the dates we're gonna start testing up through remediation through the end of the year. I do wanna highlight, because I think we sometimes miss it, June fifteenth and June fourteenth are Flex Days as well. I share that with you because we, out of our thirteen staff days, three of those are Flex. So we sometimes miss that final one at the end of the year, that we do flex with honors that time they may be taking during that last week on other. Items that need to be, to get done. I think on the high school level, when you look at participation in proms, going to graduations and a variety of those things. Is an example of where that happens. So the question was, what would be the impact? I think, Ms. Franklin, you had asked that question. We would adjust our testing schedule uh around whatever calendar was accepted. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, do you still have a question?
I do. But I'm gonna defer it to, to Ms. Owens at this point.
Okay, I have a question and then a, I guess, comment. My question is about uh the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. Um, it was noted that there's a half day for teachers for term two included in March on that uh calendar, or no?
I did, I did not understand where that came. We did not have an adjusted day in March of twenty-five and twenty-six or twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay. I would uh like to make a substitute motion. And include the twenty-six, the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven calendars. As presented post-Labor Day with the change of having the Thursday. Uh, prior to the last day being a half day on both of those calendars.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor. For the thir- the Thursday. For the last day of school to be a half day. For the rest of the division as it is for high school, is that correct?
That's what I heard, but also heard her use the term post-Labor Day, but I don't believe that's what was meant.
Uh, she means the pre-Labor Day calendar, okay, okay.
It would be an adjusted dismissal early release day, so not half day, but adjusted dismissal.
Adjusted dismissal, okay. Okay.
Now I'd like to speak.
Alright, so we have that, Ms. Um, Tony Otto, so we have that substitute motion. By Ms. Um, by Ms. Owens and it was seconded by Ms. Anderson. So that's what we're speaking to right now, and so Ms. Manning.
Thank you. So just to clarify, I don't, I'm, I'm looking at my colleague's shoulder here, so that means that both um the last two days of school. Will be half days. Yeah, and I, you know.
Really, no, not half days.
Yeah, it's still, it's still a loss of learning time for students and, I mean, I, I just feel like we already, again. We cut it from one hundred and thirty instructional days, now we're down to a hundred and eighty instructional days. One eighty-three. We cut it down to a hundred and eighty and now we're cutting even more. Um, we have that last day as a Flex Day that I think that um is beneficial and I support that, but I, I won't support any. Further cutting instruction of, of our students, thank you.
Okay, and for the record, nobody's, are there any bus runs to ATC? Are they finished with those programs on that Thursday?
They are done, that, that.
That full week they're not there. Okay. Alright, then, if, uh, Ms. Franklin.
I'm sorry, can we, can we just clarify that again? I'm sorry, could, could we repeat?
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the pre-Labor Day calendar. As presented with a modification to have the s- the Thursday and the Fri- the Thursday. Before the last day of school, so that Thursday, June, yes, on both of those. But they would be half, that they would be adjusted dismissal days, just like they are on that Friday. That Thursday would be an adjusted dismissal day for students. And both.
Ms. Tony Otto, could you put the slide back up? I can show them specifically the dates that we're talking about here. So if you look on the screen here, June twenty twenty-six, it would be June eleventh. June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven would be June the tenth.
Okay, and, and um so that would be, uh, that would impact elementary and middle school. Correct, elementary and middle school.
Cause high school already has it. Okay, is there any further discussion? I think there is, and I'm waiting, I can't see my board here. Okay, Ms. Ms. Franklin, do you need, you still need to speak? Okay, Ms. Anderson, no, yes, Ms. Anderson.
So. The teachers have been asking for this, especially the elementary teachers and, but the middle school teachers also I've heard from. But I will tell you that this is actually just giving them an extra three hours at the most. On, and that they really needed at the end of the year. And I heard the argument that middle school is still testing in some cases uh for SOLs. And, and let me tell you, if they're testing for SOLs on Thursday, the eleventh, or Thursday, the tenth. Um, they're probably gonna do that testing in the morning. They're gonna be finished by lunchtime. They're not gonna be testing in the afternoon, cause kids are, they're spent. So you do your SOL testing first thing. And um I just feel like the biggest thing that we can do right now. As you all know, we're losing teachers left and right. And we need to be listening to what they are asking for, and they're not asking for a whole lot here. So our elementary and our middle school teachers need this time. You heard one elementary teacher tonight say that she has nine pages that she has to do. Of things that have to be accomplished in that last week of school. And um, you know, I'm telling you that it's not taking away a lot of instructional time. Um, yes, I know that as long as they're in school, they should be learning, but I'm telling you, I, I've been there, I've done it. The Thursday and the Friday, the last two days. I mean, we're already ha- we're already having uh adjusted dismissal, and we don't call it half days, cause it's not a half day. They're not leaving at noon. They're leaving adjusted dismissal time, which means a couple of hours before their regular uh scheduled time, so. I really think this is necessary and I hope my colleagues will support this and support teachers.
Alright, Ms. Owens?
Thank you. And uh while we were sitting here, my colleague uh had a, a calendar to, for me to. Make sure that I wasn't uh just crazy making it up. And uh the calendar that we were provided. And I guess this was on the original date, it was on information, has uh March sixth as. Uh, students only adjusted dismissal. Is that, was that removed?
Yeah, it was not on the final calendars that I've had. I, I don't recall that date being on them. I'm certain you're looking at it. But in the ones I had revised, that was not on there.
Okay.
Before you, but was there, did it say what was going on then? Because I remember we added that.
We had some March dates on some, we didn't have an adjusted dismissal day. On any of the calendars early on, because we were told to avoid those dates. We did have some adjusted, we did have a day in March on a calendar very early, and it's no longer there.
What other adjusted dismissal days did we approve?
You have not, the only adjusted dismissal days you have approved are the ones that you see on these calendars right here, which were strictly for high school. And the final day of the end of the year.
We weren't provided uh new printouts today, but uh one that we got today just has. Two months on the front, two months on the back.
Correct.
Um, when we were given the other printouts before with all the ones on there, so it was uh some, I guess, confusion. About, now I'm kinda concerned like, oh, is there other changes that I thought were, were still on there?
I'm looking at the presentation I did last presentation again, and it, that March day is not on there.
Okay, so maybe that was a.
So I'm looking at twenty-five, twen- looking at my presentations in twenty-five, twenty-six. I do not have a date on there for March twenty-six.
Not twenty-six, just the sixth.
No, the, the year, year twenty-six. I do not have one in March of twenty twenty-seven on the presentations I did last meeting.
Okay, and I.
There's obviously a legitimate confusion. I'm just sharing with you what I presented last time, and it, it does leave us with thirteen days. Staff days.
Okay, um, the, just for, for clarity. I, I initially intended to come and vote no to all of the calendar uh options that were presented. I am not really in favor of the calendars as presented, not for lack of the calendar committee. Doing what was asked of them, but because I don't feel that that was the best that our uh board could have given. Direction to, and that I was not happy with the fact that we were not at least open to seeing the other choices with. Uh, hours being counted. Uh, I am doing a substitute motion and I will be voting on it. Because I don't want to lose the opportunity to have a pre-Labor Day start with a. A fair across the board uh adjusted dismissal for, for all staff in the district to be able to take advantage of that. But I, I do so begrudgingly, so I will put that out there and we'll see how it goes.
Ms. Riggs?
I just have to reiterate, as being a teacher and, and knowing how important um this is for the equitable part. One thing for our middle school and uh elementary school teachers that uh adjusted dismissal day for. For that Thursday and Friday is so important, there's a so much to do. And um, believe me, there's still lots of education that's going on, on those days, but there's um. These kids aren't gonna be losing that kind of education. It's really important to be able to show our teachers. Um, that we appreciate them and that we are going to support them in whatever small way, and this is a very small way. For them to do, and I just think that uh this is very minimal. But uh I would like for us to be able to, to help them out with this, so, thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
And, you know, we, we've heard a lot tonight and we've talked about, um, you know. Teachers getting bit in the classroom, you know, and, and some of the uh difficulties they already face in the classroom and. This would be uh, you know, a small um courtesy to them. I guess my question is just to ensure that we have. Um, every I dotted T cross, so to speak. Um, is this something that with bus scheduling, with, you know, just different? Uh, impacts that, that a decision like this would make, is, is this, is this possible? Is it feasible? Can we work the bus scheduling? Can we do all that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, anything further? Okay, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, for the substitute motion, we have five ayes and six nays, so the substitute motion did not pass. And we're going back to the original motion on the floor.
Alright, so the original motion on the floor was to approve the pre-Labor Day calendar. Um, as presented. Motion made by, it was Ms. Yes, the original motion was made by Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Franklin. Alright, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Um, I do, I appreciate the work of the calendar committee and I, I know that there was a lot of work, but um. I still cannot get behind a pre-Labor Day um start for our division. And so I will not be supporting this for that reason. Um, I don't think that comes as any surprise. Um, when we look to our neighbors here in Chesapeake, they've found a way to do post-Labor Day. And, and I think that we can too here in Virginia Beach, and so um, you know, I look at their academic days and. They're about the same, so um, anyway, thank you.
Um, Mr. Frank, uh Kendrick, thank you. I just wanna also share that that's all that I've heard in my district as well. A lot of the parents want to start the school year after Labor Day, so I, I need to be supportive of that as well.
So, Mr. Delaney? One of those calendars with the post-Labor Day took us to. June twentieth.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven had it like June twenty-fifth. Think the twenty-six, twenty-seven was right around June nineteenth, it would have to end the following week, you're like a two-day. Kind of an odd Monday, Tuesday ending because of the Juneteenth holiday. Uh, Chesapeake is going to pre-Labor Day?
I, I knew they were.
Next year, so, correct, Dr. Robertson, everybody's gone locally to a pre-Labor Day calendar. Uh, they're not this year, but they're moving in that direction.
For the next year.
Correct, so post-Labor Day took us later into the year based on the parameters that were set.
So I, I also think about our. I'll just say the governor's school program, after the next year, we will be com- i- if we vote on a post-Labor Day start. We will be completely out of sync. With the rest of the region. Does Chesapeake use um seat hours or, or days?
They go days.
Okay, how many days do they go?
Year one eighty-one this year.
Okay.
Which was causing them to end on a Monday.
Okay. I think the community did really well um with the pre-Labor Day start. It is barely a pre-Labor Day start. It's a few, it's four days with a four-day weekend. Um, I think, I mean, it was a change, but I thought we did really well. And I am really concerned about not staying in sync with the rest of the uh, with the rest of the region. So, um, Ms. Franklin?
I just wanted to make a comment that um I personally would love to see a post-Labor Day for twenty-six. Understandably, it could not happen for twenty-seven because of um, you know, the, the very, very late. You know, Labor Day uh, you know, date that year. Um, but, but my community has voiced their opinion and, and they do want a pre-Labor Day, so I am going to support um a pre-Labor Day spark.
Might I just add again? I just wanna say, I think our community's gonna be very upset. With our end date being the twentieth and the twenty-fifth of June. That's, that is really gonna hit heavy on this community um for a couple of days. Ms. Manning?
Yeah, and uh just to piggyback on that, I think our community um is already gonna be disappointed by still getting out late. Even though they're going earlier, and that's, you know, why I suggested that two weeks. Um, a little over two weeks at Christmas break is, is a little bit much. Um, we've expressed that, Ms. Ms. Brown and I both expressed that. Um, it's a long time for the kids to be out of the classroom and um that's why I don't support the calendar, thank you.
Okay, in fairness though, let me just, I just wanna go back and make sure we have all of this. The holiday break over the next two years, where the, the dates fall. For the holidays, there really wasn't movement. For the holidays, there really wasn't movement there for for. This being. Shorter, it was, it was actually. Where New Year's Eve and New Year's Day fall and.
Well, here's, here's what I'd say, uh Ms. Melnick, is this was the comment I made, I don't know, two months ago. We had two days in previous calendars where we would come back, say, January second and third.
Mm-hmm.
And if recall, the feedback we got when we did that was, it makes zero sense.
Yep.
To come back for two days, that was the general comments we heard of how upset people were coming back. So when we presented these calendars, we said the dilemma is on the front end now.
Right.
Where it'd be December twenty first and twenty second. And then you would have the twenty third off and come and then the weekend was, you know, the first and the second, so you'd come back on the third. So that was, decision was made based on feedback that was provided around people saying that two days. I hate when they say this, but is a waste of time to just come back for two days, it's similar to when we say no. No learning November when we have those days off, because I'm a big believer, anytime kids are in our schools, they're getting instruction regardless if it's. In the classroom or just interacting with a kid on the playground. But those were all of the parameters that were set.
And if I can just add. We all know how difficult creating a calendar is, and I'll simply say this. Administration recommends a single calendar and that's what's in front of you. Period, I do not recommend any other calendar, that is the calendar that we recommend based upon all the information we have. It has worked well for us for two years, I recognize, just like we talked about the building unification committee tonight. That some people were gonna be disappointed because they were going to have to be affected by a move. What I'm saying to you is, one hundred percent administration stands behind the calendar we have provided to you. With making the election days flex days, because it provides teachers badly needed time throughout the school year. To get, to have staff days, a post-Labor Day calendar will eliminate those staff days. It will bring back a conversation to this board as to whether or not you wanna stick to a hundred and eighty days. Or do you wanna go to hours? So we can talk about this forever, we can postpone this vote and send the calendar committee back to work. And it will take three months because we're smack dab in the budget with a brand new board in January. So I'm asking you to stroll and consider. We are one hundred percent behind the one we're standing in front, we're putting in front of you.
And and just for the, for the record, for my comment, January first. In twenty twenty five is is a Thursday. In twenty twenty, in twenty six is is a um. It's a Thursday, so asking parents to come back on that Friday and then of course um. In twenty twenty seven. Mm-hmm. I'm I'm sorry, I'm just gonna stop, uh but, Ms. Anderson.
So if you remember, some of the feedback we got from um our community was that they wanted two weeks at Christmas. That's some of the feedback that we received, they want that long winter break and I don't blame them, especially, especially. If you are a military family and you are traveling during the holidays, you need that time. So, I I, you know, the fact that we have a high military population, for, a lot of them do travel for the holidays. And the fact that where the uh first, for, New Year starts. It just leads to the fact that we we really need the two weeks, you may not like the two weeks. But it's really necessary to make this calendar work and I hope you all will just support this calendar. You know, it's too bad that we couldn't get what we wanted for for the teachers, but at least let's go, go ahead, we've got, we had one concession tonight where. At least uh Election Day is a flex day, so I think um I think I'm going to support this calendar, thank you.
Alright.
Can I just make one comment on data?
Please.
Because we we've talked about it and then I'll I'll leave it alone, forty seven percent of our survey respondents said pre-Labor Day, our instructional staff was sixty percent. Non-instructional staff forty three percent, community members were forty five percent in the majority of saying prefer to pre. From a parent's standpoint, it was forty three percent pre, forty six percent post. So the, when you looked at overall, forty seven percent of our survey respondents said pre-Labor Day, forty two percent post, eleven undecided. That's a huge flip from the previous year.
Yeah.
I just share that data as as a, hopefully a final kinda point as we.
And again, the twenty fifth of January. Um, oh, Ms. Brown. You sure? Alright, anybody else? Voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have six eyes and five knees, so the motion did pass for the twenty twenty five, twenty six. And twenty six, twenty seven school calendar as presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Delaney.
Yes, ma'am, I can shave.
You can shave.
Alright, thank you for your prayers, Ms. Anderson, I appreciate it.
Okay, um item C is the Division Literacy Plan. And so I call for a motion to approve the Division Literacy Plan as mandated by the Virginia Literacy Act, otherwise known as VLA. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick, any discussion? Alright, seeing none, the voting board is open. Ms. Anderson.
So Madam Chair, we have ten eyes and one knee, so the motion did pass for the Division Literacy Plan.
Okay, item D is the Bayside Middle School consolidation, I call for a motion to approve the consolidation of the Bayside Sixth Grade Campus. And Bayside Middle School into one school at Bayside Middle School located at nine, six, five Newtown Road, Virginia Beach. Beginning the twenty five, twenty six school year, motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Kendrick, any discussion? Ms. Owens.
Thank you, uh. I am in favor of the consolidation uh of the Bayside. Bayside Six to the Bayside Middle, um but I do have, I guess, some questions and uh hopes with that. Uh, obviously, there was a reason why Bayside Six was separated from Bayside uh Middle as a whole. Around making sure that the students had enough attention and support and uh ratios. And as we bring the schools back together, I wanna ensure that there is still. A similar ratio uh and similar support, I would love to be able to see the specialists from. Bayside Six all be able to come over and continue to have that ratio of support for our 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 sixth grade. Campus within the the middle school and uh similar with the administrative staff there. Uh, obviously, we don't need double the uh cafeteria and some of those other things, but I I would like to see. Those staff continue for that support purpose, uh what is the likelihood of that?
Yeah, strong likelihood, at this time, we have no plans to remove any of the support that currently exists at Bayside Sixth Grade or Bayside Seventh, Eighth. With them, once they merge, they'll have the same supports.
So that the same staff members are, will be coming over to the new building?
So, yes, when we talk about, and there's a HR piece to this, yes, when we're talking about. The same amount of staffing and the student teacher ratio, that'll be the same. When we're talking about teachers who are coming over, the Bayside Sixth Grade students who are. Teachers that would transition to Seventh, Eighth, there will be no change in that staffing. Now, when we're talking about classified staff, there could be some changes.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, um with that in mind, I I do support this, I think that there are some real benefits. Uh in terms of electives and and other supports, uh we have currently some of our elective teachers going back and forth between the two campuses. It creates issues and hardships that can be eliminated and uh in terms of the general morale and and talking with multiple of the staff members. Uh, this seems to be a a good move, I, like any change, there'll be some challenges, but I. I think that overall, this is gonna be what's best for the uh Bayside Community and so I'm excited to see it come together.
And with that, we welcome Mr. Freeman.
Sounds good, so uh there are a couple of slides that we had prepared uh to be able to share, so. Uh, good evening, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board and Dr. Robertson, uh prior to tonight's vote, we wanted to provide you with an opportunity for any remaining clarification. Um, there are two uh categories of benefits for this proposal, uh there are benefits to students. And there are benefits to the operating budget and the capital program. Uh, our values say that we put students first, so let's begin with Dr. Smith sharing benefits more directly aligned with our students.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, good evening, I'm Dr. Smith, Senior Executive Director of Middle Schools. I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you the benefits of merging Bayside Sixth Grade Campus with the Bayside Seventh, Eighth Grade Campus. Who has clicker, I have it, I have control.
Or as Dr. Bankey calls it, the clicker.
The clicker.
You got it?
As you're aware, a number of transition of students go through in our Bayside feeder school pattern has been a topic of discussion. Under our current structure, sixth grade students transition twice in two years from fifth grade to sixth grade and sixth grade to seventh grade. While our sixth grade students across the division only experience one transition, which is fifth grade to sixth grade. Moving sixth grade students back to Bayside Middle School will eliminate one of these transitions. For middle school students, school spirit and belongingness are important as it promotes engagement, confidence. And social growth, these qualities foster teamwork and a positive school environment. While both schools work hard to foster schools, school spirit and belongingness. They lack the vertical connections seen in our traditional middle schools. Events as simple as winter concerts, pep rallies and after-school clubs. Mean so much to our students and are equal importance to our parents and our school communities. Combining schools will allow for access to more club opportunities, deeper connectivity and a stronger sense of school spirit. It'll also put Bayside on the same schedule as all of our traditional middle schools. And will eliminate the need to transport our sixth grade students to the middle school campus for after-school activities. Merging the schools will also foster stronger vertical team planning, which is essential for middle school teachers. As it's, it's, as it promotes continuity and alignment of instruction across grade levels. Through collaboration, teachers ensure curriculum, skills and expectations build progressively, avoiding potential gaps in instruction. This vertical approach supports student growth and builds teacher capacity as they focus on strong tier-one instructional strategies. That benefit all students. One example of this is our eighth grade students who take the science S O L test, which covers grade six through eight standards. Having grades six through eight science teachers on one campus will allow for stronger vertical planning to support student needs. Under the current structure, there is a shared staffing between both schools, which has been a challenge for staff. A few examples include elective teachers, the school improvement specialist and the student activities coordinator. Combining schools will eliminate some of these challenges such as time to set up classrooms for lessons and to travel between schools. Time saved will allow more time to support students or instructional program and would also allow us to maximize our schedule. One example of this is our school improvement specialist. Who must manage testing, tutoring, achievement data and maintain plans for both Bayside Six and for Bayside Seventh, Eighth. Merging schools back together will allow for support staff to better assist students and of equal importance, our teachers. In closing, these are some of the benefits of allowing both campuses to merge together and provide Bayside students, staff and school community. The same structure that all schools enjoy and benefit from, which is a sixth through eighth grade comprehensive middle school experience. I'll now turn it back over to Mr. Freeman.
Alright, in addition to those benefits for our students and educational programming, this proposal also lays the path for disposing of our building that is rated poorest. From a total condition index and a facilities condition index perspective, uh you've seen this slide many times now. It also uh relocates our future sixth grade students to a better learning environment. And it enables disposal of the air grown property. Which saves operating budget expenditures year over year and it avoids expenditures from the capital program for both new construction and ongoing maintenance. Again, we wanted to provide this opportunity for any clarification prior to your decision, we are ready to take any further questions that you guys have.
Okay, Ms. Kendrick.
I just, um, I requested to speak before you got up, so what I have to say is not directed at you per se, but. I do wanna just um say that I am so happy that we're doing this for a number of reasons. Um, you know, as it was said and when we had our session with the community, it was noted that our kids who. Go to Bayside Six and Middle, our middle school. A lot of them are also students at the tri-campus and when you add up all the different transitions that our kids. Have, going to five schools prior to ever getting to high school is is a bit much, so. That's one plus, in addition to everything that you stated, why I'm happy to see that we are moving our sixth grade. Sixth graders to the middle school, also, um I had a chance to visit. Both of the locations and meet the staff and meet our incredible principal Champri's. Um Bevel, who's leading the um Seventh and Eighth Campus, I think this will make her smile as well, knowing that she's gonna get her sixth graders. Um there and just the feedback from the community, you know, they shared for the most part that they thought that this was a good idea. And they wanna definitely make sure they get our kids in a better building and out of the Jericho Road building. So um I just wanna thank all of my colleagues who um who saw that this was important for us to do and for your team. And for all the work that you all did so fast to make this option C a possibility, so I really appreciate you. And thank you everyone for making this happen.
Yeah, okay, so I say, oh, Ms. Owens.
It's gonna be so quick.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say.
This one is, uh, I guess more towards Dr. Robertson, uh after this vote, if it goes favorably, like I hope it will. Um, how quickly can the Bayside staff uh start kind of coming together to be able to have? The transition plan, particularly, I'm concerned about our rising fifth graders who typically get to do the. Kind of visits, that I want them to still be able to do that and have the space ready for them to do that at the end of their school year.
Yes, so Dr. Smith's already prepared for that and he's al- he's briefed the two principals on the possibilities. And they're excited about the transition as well, so we'll make sure that all of those opportunities are provided and those students are welcomed into the. The sixth, the traditional middle school concept.
Well, and again, leadership matters and we're glad to have it over there at Bayside Middle, okay, I see nothing else, and so the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven eyes, the motion did pass for the Bayside Middle School um consolidation.
Excellent. Okay, item D, item E is uh the V S B, V S B A. Proposed Legislative Positions Amendments and the Proposed Bylaw Amendments, so I call for a vote. Uh, yeah, I do, I call for a motion to approve um. The V S B A Proposed Legislative Positions and Bylaw Amendments. Uh, motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Owens, any discussion? Ms. Manning.
Yeah, so um I was pretty shocked that this was being put on for action, we were not giving any, given any notice in advance. Um I received a message on. Um I received a message on Thursday night that um we would be having a discussion about this on the agenda today. Um this is not even out there for the public to even view it. They have no idea what's in this document, what we're about to vote on. I barely do because I I I wasn't prepared because I didn't think we were be, we would be voting on this tonight. Um I'm only gonna very briefly mention some of the things in here. I I'm gonna vote no, no matter what, simply because um the public has not been given notification on this. And a number of my colleagues here um have uh even said that even though we brought items from the policy committee, sent it back to policy committee, they wouldn't allow it to go onto action, even though it had been on the, on the information agenda before. Um and so now the public still hasn't seen this. I don't think we should be voting on it. Um but a number of the problems that I have, proposal number one proposes that we measure growth the same as, at least as heavy as proficiency or mastery. I completely disagree with that. Um it talks about um supporting recommendations made by the J L A R K. While I've read the J L A R K, I've not studied it in depth, so I'm not familiar with those recommendations. Um it talks about reinstating the federal fund deduction methodology used prior to fiscal year two thousand nine. I have no idea what that is, um and and a number of other items such as that. So for that reason, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Okay, so there was a reason this was brought forward. Mr. Culpepper, would you?
Yeah.
Like to speak to that before I say something else?
No, that's right.
Okay, go ahead.
No, Vic, you can blame, you can blame me for that, uh at least a little bit. So the uh um legislative committee met, I don't know, three, three weeks ago?
October twenty third.
October twenty third, and uh we hadn't seen this document and we didn't see it till after that meeting. Uh so we're scrambling a little bit to get it into a meeting in time for us to even see it at all before the uh V S B A meets on the twenty first. At least wanted the board to see what's in here before we send our two representatives to go uh to represent us. And I, and if, I guess frankly, if if the board is unhappy with their opportunity to review this, then we can, we can direct our members to abstain. But I didn't want them to, like I said, I didn't want them to go there without us having given them some direction of what, of uh what the board's position is.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I just, um point of clarification, are we gonna go down these proposals individually or as a packet? Or um what is, what is the plan for this, since there's many, many, many topics uh covered in here?
Okay, so um yes, we can go through each one and I'm gonna ask Ms. Riggs to do, to direct this discussion because she was in um, she was in um a meeting today with V S B A. So for the record, again, these are the amendments that each school division is asked to bring forward. So our legislative committee met this summer at some point, I'm assuming, and did not have any amendments to send to V S B A. So these are created by other school districts and brought forward. We talked about this at length last year. Um and so as you go through these amendments, at the bottom of each one, um it'll say submitted by, um like proposal number three, submitted by Fairfax, submitted by, and it'll, it'll tell you where it comes. And then uh everything that anybody submits then um is vetted by a V S B A board. And then these were the ones that were selected. And so with that, I'll turn to Ms. Riggs to go through each one.
Okay, um first of all, every one of us was, was sent this book with these proposals on October the fourth. Am I, am I correct with that, Ms. um Tony Otto? Was October the fourth, right?
I believe, and then there was a, a
Addendum.
Updated one also sent.
Yeah, so all of us got it. If, you know, you're getting the emails from the S B A, which everyone is, unless you've decided not to get them, um everyone has them. And I did have these proposals at our uh last um legislative meeting. We did not have time to go over them. We had about an hour or less because there were people that had to leave that meeting and go to the B U C. So um we did have it, though. I mean, everybody was given this. And so you, everybody has had plenty of time to look over it if you had questions. This is not the first time we've seen it or shouldn't be. Because if you're getting something from V S B A, because we're all members of it, whether some of us like it or not, you're getting this information. And um I asked Ms. Melnick about it at the beginning of last week. I said, look, you know, you might want to get this out to them because they might have questions. But uh we just had our meeting on Zoom today, the delegates. This was the first meeting. They're offering, they were offering one this evening and they were offering one on the fourteenth. And I took the one today at, from twelve to one. Um and basically, it's just to go to review, you know, what we do in the delegate assembly. So the, the, I saw this the same time everybody else did, October the fourth. I can go over each one of them. And we can, you know.
I just had a, a, a question. My understanding from last year was that uh either the, the board kind of supports it or they don't support it and that there's not a pick and choose when you're there. If that is the case, I would rather just call the question, have us vote on it. You read the material or you didn't read the material, you vote how you vote. I, I won't object if somebody wants to sit and go through these one by one, but it's not going to change the outcome of what our delegates can do at the conference. And so I, I have a headache. I'd love for us to, to wrap it up.
Yeah, I agree.
So just so the board knows, next week when I attend the conference, I will make sure to have this conversation with somebody from V S B A that when we do this work early on, Mrs. Lynetti, I've done this before with you. I don't ever remember getting it this late. And so I will make sure that somebody knows that it is just too late for boards to react to these things and um it, it needs to be a topic of conversation.
And I'll remind you, the process allows you, after they vote on it, if you want to take a different position aboard, you just make a different position as a board afterwards and send that to them. So you still have the ability, if you disagree after what a final vote is, you have the ability to take an action after you're on board.
Okay, fair enough. Now, do you all still want to speak or are we gonna, some, it sounds like somebody called the question, so.
I'll second that call the question.
All right, well, that, that.
So now we have to vote on call the question.
Yeah.
That takes.
Okay, we have to vote on the call, call the question. Okay, so um all in favor of accepting the.
Hold on, she has to.
Uh okay. Okay, so um called a question motion was made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Manning. The voting board is open.
To call the question.
To call the question.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eight ayes and three nays, so the call to question did pass.
All right, now, um I'll entertain a motion to approve the um legislative positions and and uh proposed by law amendments as presented um in the information I gave you earlier. Uh motion made by um Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Owens. Voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have five ayes and six nays, so the motion did fail, did not pass for um directing the delegate to agree with.
Okay, so now my question to the board is, um Ms. Riggs is the delegate member and so are you asking her to abstain or to, because we did not have enough information or time, or to vote no? Well, we didn't. Okay, Ms. Riggs will vote no next. Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that. Um somebody had mentioned the word abstain earlier, so I just wanted to clarify that. All right, Ms. Riggs, you have been. Okay. No, they, and I think the board realizes that. They do. But we have a larger problem of disseminating information in a timely manner, so. All right, item F on action is the Kellum High School turf replacement. And that was brought back, that was brought from consent to action, so a question can be asked. So we welcome Melissa Ingram.
Um hi, good evening.
So I'm gonna wait for her to, are you ready? Okay, did you make that, did you make that motion? Okay, and the second? By Ms. Kendrick. All right, now, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I asked uh for it to be uh brought to action because I, I just wanted some clarification. Uh I know that Kellum is one of our newest schools and uh I'm wondering with the turf replacement is, is it a ten-year turf replacement cycle? And do we have other schools in the district that have not had their turf replaced sooner than this uh this one? Or at all?
Um thank you for the question, Ms. Owens. So in front of you, you do have a um, a replacement turf field um that was bid. Tw- uh twenty thirteen is when the Kellum High School turf field was put in place. It is our oldest turf field in the district. Um their life expectancy is roughly eight years. We're now at eleven years due to um our maintenance. Our landscape management does a really great job making sure that we have um adequate um buffers, safety on the ground and that we are keeping up with the turf field itself. So we are past, three years past its warranty. We do a G max testing annually to make sure that there is no um danger to the players in terms of concussions, that there's enough bounce. Um we also end up, you know, daily, at times, weekly, uh moving the rubber around. So both the uh fabric of the turf grass material has been deteriorating to a point where it's no longer safe, as well as the pellets. Uh the good news is, is that um it is not a replacement of the infrastructure underneath the turf field. You've also approved um a Tallwood High School uh new build for turf today. Uh that came in at two and a half million dollars because a lot of that cost is the infrastructure, the drainage for the playing field and not just the carpeting. You know, if you, if you would, the grass, the turf that's being replaced um at Kellum High School. We did get uh three bids at Kellum. Uh we did get a bid for uh six hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. Um that is our low bid. And so we're hoping to take that so that we're able to use a turf field, get the work done over the winter and be able to use a turf field, go through the testing so that we don't go through a fail the test. We were getting close to it last school year. Um and it's a required annual testing for that. We've been working with our student activities and the student activities coordinator at the schools as we do with all of our turf fields that are put in place.
Ms. Manning.
Yeah, I asked this question a while back because I was shocked that Kellum was, was um up for turf field replacement before Cox even, even is considered for it. And, you know, we, we have a sustainability issue here with um being able to um put these turf fields in all of our schools. And I think that we need to have a, I think the board should have a bigger discussion over what we're gonna do with these other schools. Um are they gonna, is, is Cox gonna get turf? Or, you know, I'm hearing it from parents all the time at Cox. This isn't right. Why is Kellum getting turf before we're even getting our first turf? So I feel like we need um a bit of a long range plan on how we're gonna not only turf all of our fields for equality reasons and also how we're gonna maintain the cost of replacing all of those fields.
So absolutely love it. Uh so over the past couple of years, um we have shared with you the challenge of being nine hundred million, on track for nine hundred million dollars loss in buying power. And that was due to the level funding in the capital program. So for the past year, two years, we've talked about roof, H vac, fire alarms and uh foundation replacements. So we've layered that, so we have the facilities brief next week. And we're gonna go layers deeper, which is gonna include turf fields. Um and we are having conversations of, and you've heard from Daven Port and others, of what's available in the capital program for us to be able to do with our allocations while still remaining within the debt service limitation to be able to do other things that we haven't been able to get to due to that level funding. We're gonna have turf fields as part of that discussion. We're trying to tee everything up so that when we get to the capital program, that we have specific things that are put in there. But uh next, beyond that big four that I just talked about, where we say that, hey, here's the next layer of things that we want to be able to get to. I don't want to give you any read ahead because we're gonna go in detail on that and the facilities brief that you're gonna get at the next board meeting. But follow you one hundred percent.
Ms. Anderson?
I agree with Ms. Manning on this. I've heard, I live in the, in the Cox district, I have heard from numerous families around the area. They're upset that the northern part of our city is being neglected when it comes to stuff like this. I know that, I, I, the feeling that they're saying is that, you know, hey, you decided to, to put a brand new turf field on Kellum High School. It's a brand new school. And then you put it at Tallwood and you put it here and you put it there. But Cox is being left behind, First Colonial is being left behind. I mean, the northern part of our city does not have turf fields. And so here we are replacing one. And granted, I get it that that's on a ten-year cycle. I understand that. But it almost feels like you decided to do turf fields before you decided that you were gonna be able to maintain the turf fields. It's not right. So for equity across our city, we need to, we need to start thinking about, hey, let, let's make sure that if we do something like this, that we're gonna be able to adequately, you know, be able to replace it without other schools feeling totally left behind. Um but so I just, that, that's why I, I need, I just needed to say it because I've had so many people who have come to me and, you know, I live right over there. So they, they say all the time, you know, hey, we're not even being considered to get a field, much less replace it. No, so that's, it's just not right.
Ms. Brown?
We appreciate your support related to the additional funding that'll be needed to do that. We're excited to have that discussion.
I'm with you on that and I'll be out there, you know, stumping for, you know, let's, let's adequately support our schools, period. Not just for turf fields, but for everything, teacher raises, et cetera.
Ms. Brown?
Okay, so um I am unclear as to whether or not there is a cost benefit to turf fields for our division as a whole that can be proven as a reason that we should be um engaging in two and a half million dollar uh projects uh for these turfs or eight million dollars or the infrastructure that I, I know that we can't go backwards and undo what we did. Um but I am, I'm unclear um about the math on that um and, and whether or not, you know, we're really um doing due diligence with taxpayer funds on that um, that direction. Uh I do think that if we do it, we need to do it in um other areas of the city as well. Um not just the Kellum High School. I, I do agree with that. Um I know that uh this one was already in our budget, um so I'll, I'll support it. But um I think that we needs to be having some more discussions about turf, what we're gonna do with turf. Um and, you know, particularly with us having uh Princess Anne now is our priority school. I know that the Holland Annex is um in the previous proposal supposed to be getting turf. And whether or not we're gonna put turf in the Holland Annex for a very um temporary period of time, um you know, whether or not we really needs to be doing that. So I, I do think we need to be taking a look at that. So, thank you.
Ms. Weems?
Um how many of our high schools do not have a turf field?
We have three.
So we have three. Um in your opinion, because of the testing and the testing does not meet standards, is, is what I'm hearing, is this dangerous for our athletes?
Uh so that's the risk. So the risk is, uh I appreciate the comment about ten-year cycle. It's not really a ten-year cycle, but that's the projected timeframe that you're gonna still have a safe playing space. If they go out and they conduct the test and it doesn't pass the test, we're not playing on that field.
Yeah, that, that was my next question. When it doesn't pass, where will, what will we do?
That's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to plan ahead.
Right.
And provide an option where we get this one uh refurbished. Um, and then at our next facilities meeting that we have, or that the facilities presentation at the next meeting, we talk about what the future is for those other, uh, fields.
Yeah, and I know that, and it's not you, you decided to turf fields, and you decided to leave something else. You guys, we voted, we don't turf fields unless it's, it vote, it is voted by us. So we can't blame them because we just voted on one, and we voted on these, and all that stuff. Um, so, yeah, if, yeah, um, I, I, I mean, this is different than book. You know, books going out of recycling, because books, it's not dangerous if they go the eighth or ninth or tenth year. But this is, this is our student athletes, and, uh, you know, i- if it barely passes and somebody gets their leg all m- mangled up because they tripped, or whatever you do on an unsafe field, or if it doesn't pass and we're scrambling around trying to figure out what field they're gonna play on, it's not an ideal situation. So we decided, we voted on turf fields, and we gotta maintain, and we can't have our, our, um, athletes on dangerous surfaces.
Ms. Owens.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify the, whether we vote on it right now, or if, for some reason, we bump it back a, a few meetings and get more information, the replacement is not gonna happen during the school year, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So.
It is.
So that's, that's fair. What, what additional information do we need other than if it tests poorly, and it's an unsafe playing surface, we will not be able to play on it?
Is it random testing? Do we know when the testing is coming?
Annual test.
Right, do we know when in the, when in the year?
You know, next day the testing is?
Um, December it would be due, that's why we planned on the replacement last year.
So if it fails this December. Either way, we are.
Something much worse.
SOL? Okay, okay, thank you.
So to, to kind of share what your question is, so much like we talked about from point of view, that we've been monitoring over the years, and we, we noticed the trend. It's the same thing with the turf field. Test it every year, and it's approaching that timeframe where we're at risk. Uh, we think that we're ahead of it, we think it's gonna pass in December, but waiting another year beyond that, it's not advisable.
Ms. Manning.
What does it cost to go back?
What does it cost to go back to grass?
We would need to go do that work if we wanted to be able to transition from the turf field back to grass.
Uh, you know, I guess what I, what I'm looking at here is, you all are gonna be meeting soon about a long-term plan for all of our schools. Um, you know, I, I'm thinking, could we defer this vote until, when, when is your meeting, that you're gonna be discussing all of this?
I think what you mean by all of this is the facilities update that we have coming at the next meeting, that part of that would be including what we needed to be able to do related to turf field, and what we haven't been able to do.
So that'll be the next meeting?
At the next meeting.
Okay. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we defer this vote until after, um, that update.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Just, just for clarification before we go any further, so when I said we're gonna do that, really what we're talking about is we have three schools left to go. One school's gonna be a new construction school, so it makes sense to line it up with the new construction, it's Prince Anne High School. So for the other tools, you know, two schools, to be able to set the conditions where we understand what the board's intent is related to building a capital program, for, do we put the two additional turf fields in? Because every time we talk about it, we've talked about Cox High School. Um, so we know that the, we get a lot of feedback that the desire is there to move forward with adding more turf fields. This conversation feels a little bit different because you just asked about can we go back and, and take them away? That wasn't the conversation we were looking to have at the facility, uh, update, we were looking to have the cut. The intention was, what I was trying to share is, when we come back to you, we're not gonna talk just about roofs, HVAC foundations, and fire alarm replacements. Now we're gonna talk about other things, and those remaining turf fields are one of them, to be able to talk about having the allocations in the capital program to support completing those projects. So the way that you shared the substitute motion was almost like, hey, we're gonna have a detailed discussion about which direction do we go? Do we go backwards away from turf fields? That wasn't what, in two weeks, to be able to have that conversation prepared and ready to go.
Well, I, you know, I'm just concerned about the ability to sustain all of these turf fields long-term. Um, and so I think it's important that the board has a discussion about it, and we're, we're, we just added a bunch of new programs, um, for workforce development. I love that. I'm glad that we're doing that. That's a priority for this board. It, our turf field's still a priority to this board. Um, and so, I, I mean, I think it would be fair for us to get a little bit more feedback and have a little bit more discussion at the next meeting, um, along with that update on what those numbers look like. Where are we in the cycle with replacing the additional ones that we have right now that, you know, do we, do we have another one coming due in two years, or next year? Um, give us an update where we are with those, with those fields, um, and the costs, um, schedule maybe even at the update, um, to, to get a more informed opinion.
So I think what you heard was asking for the cost related to continuing with them and what the addition was. What I didn't hear from you is say, go develop a cost for what we would do going in the other direction.
Um, I, I mean, I, I think that is, is probably something that would be helpful.
Don't know that we can have that by.
Okay.
Two weeks from now.
Ms. Riggs.
Um, do you remember, 'cause I don't think you were.
I was not here in two thousand thirteen when the, when the original one was put in.
You remember when it was, well, you, you, you reading, you've read in the, the notes and minutes that when we did vote on this, we had, it was, um, presented to us at a workshop. I remember where the workshop was. No, it wasn't even the workshop, it was our retreat, and we talked about it, we all decided. Now, there's some people here, obviously, that weren't here, the, uh, Ms. Manning, you were there. We decided that we wanted to go towards turf fields. So it was this board's, not everybody on this board, but half of us, direction to move that way. Um, so I think that, um, now that we know the reality of it, I think it's, you know, causing lots of concerns and, and problems, so. I would like to also, when you guys do that, I think it would be, uh, beneficial for everyone, especially this new board, and the new people coming on, to give your pros and cons of the turf compared to the, the, you know, going back to the old, to see. Uh, like, how often do you have to, you know, work on the, the fields if they're not turf fields? And how often do you have to work, you know, how much does it cost? So I think that, th- all of that information would be important, and obviously, I'm not asking for that before you guys can get it to us. But if that's what everybody's wanting, you know, you need to give the pros and cons, I guess, and give a whole review of it, because apparently, everybody needs to hear that again, 'cause it's gonna be a whole, you know, a different board.
So I have a question. Earlier, you voted to put, uh, turf field into Tallwood High School.
Today.
Today.
And, and now we're saying that we need more information. So if this board feels like they need more information, we, this board needs to go back and revisit the decision that was made a little while ago to do Tallwood High School. Unfortunately, this board's been subjected to decisions made by previous boards, and, which was to put turf fields in all of our schools. I don't see any pathway that you can go backwards, um, from a community standpoint. The, the ability to play on a turf field from an athletic standpoint, to parents in this, athletes in this community is huge. Uh, so I think, unfortunately, you've been put in a really difficult situation where those recurring costs have exploded, like everything else. I think we need to move forward, and then, then, uh, when the board gets into the budget process, and we look at the CIP, Mr. Freeman shows his facilities presentation in a couple of weeks, we'll have to recognize and factor in the replacement piece of the turf fields. Uh, there's also some opportunities, because I've been told by several members of the Cox community, they're ready to pay for their own.
Yeah.
So if this board wants to allow that, there's a pathway for that, too.
We like that. So, um, Ms. Franklin.
And, Mr. Freeman, Melissa, I, I just had a question. You had mentioned something about we're having a test in December, is that correct?
Um, yes, the test would be due in December. Um, however, we were so close to failing last, uh, annual test that we decided to go ahead and design it so that we would replace it, 'cause if we don't get this, um, approved and go forward with construction, we might not be able to use it in the spring. If we get a failed score, we will not be able to use a turf field until it's replaced.
Okay, so from what I'm gathering, and I, and I understand this conversation about the turf and the cost, I mean, that, yeah, it's terrible what the cost is. Um, but, you know, it doesn't look like we can go backwards, and we have to do something to ensure that, um, Kellam's gonna be able to have spring sports. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, I, I, I'm gonna just, uh, move forward with being able to do this, but I do agree that the, the future board does need to have these, these discussions, and, you know, um, I, you know, I would, I would love to see y'all prepare to have those discussions about turf, non-turf, you know, do you move forward with all turf, and, you know, and that, and that sort of thing? Because, you know, it is, it, it does seem problematic, especially with our CIP, where it is right now in the funding, so.
So let's, let me just pause for one second before I call Ms. Brown. Ms. Manning, did your substitute motion make it to the floor? But your motion's still on the floor. Okay, Ms. Brown, are you gonna, that's why I was gonna ask you, you're gonna, are you gonna pull that? All right, Ms. Brown, and then Mr. Culpepper.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm fine with the substitutes to vote on this at our next formal meeting. Um, I'm also fine with voting on it tonight, um, so, I mean, I, I will support the substitute. Um, however, I, I will say, um, I am going to support this because of the, the safety aspects, um, for our students, and I do support definitely athletics. Um, I, I will note, though, when we moved the, uh, the Kellam High School, the Tallwood one was not read when we did consent, and, or maybe I missed it. Um, and so I actually had thought that they had both been moved. I was, I'm a little bit surprised here now to, uh, hear otherwise, but I, I probably, it was over, oversight on my part. Um, but yeah, I, I do think we need to have some more conversation about, uh, the sustainability. I, I don't know that we can really undo it, and so I think we need to have some conversation about what that looks like in the community. But, um, I will support the substitute, uh, to defer this to the, I think it's November twenty-sixth meeting. Um, and if that doesn't pass, I will then, uh, support this, so, thank you.
All right, Mr. Culpepper.
Uh, gosh, the way this conversation's developed, it actually looks like we looked at this problem, right, at least I looked at this problem backwards. Um, I saw Tallwood as a new one going in, and that's the plan, so we should continue with that. And then I was worrying about, you know, and then Kellam makes me think, well, wait a minute, why are we doing Kellam again, when we haven't done two other schools already, at all? I, I agree with what you said, Jennifer, that, uh, there's, there's really no choice here, we have to do this. The question is whether we do Tallwood.
Yeah.
And, and there's already a motion on the floor, but I think what we actually, actually should do is reconsider that mo- uh, that vote.
Okay, Ms. Manning.
Um, I, I'll, if, if Ms. Anderson will agree, I'll withdraw my motion after hearing conversation. You know, I'll, I'll, I'll go move forward with the original motion. Okay. So I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And, um, and, and just to his point, um, can, I don't know what the procedure is to reconsider a previous vote.
I believe the majority just has to make a motion to reopen the vote.
Okay. All right, well, let's do this, and then, okay.
All right, Ms. Riggs, I just wanna ask, how long?
Add a new action motion.
How long? When is, when is your plan?
If we postpone Tallwood High School, uh, we might not be able to have the field ready for, uh, football season at Tallwood.
That, that's what I'm asking, and I'm asking also, um, if we pass this tonight to go ahead and move with Kellam, move on, because of the safety, when is the plan going to be expedited, and when are you gonna have it finished?
We are hoping to have it completed, um, the end of February.
Okay, all right, and you do.
For Kellam High School.
And you do need it for then, for the spring sports?
We would, we would need it to use it for the spring sports, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, Ms. Anderson.
So if we, if someone from the prevailing side asks to reconsider the Tallwood, what would be the plan for Tallwood Football next year? Would they just play on grass?
Uh, yes, we would not be able to complete, we run the risk of not being able to complete the project for summer, um, fall sports at Tallwood High School if we do not continue, um, with the contract that we have bid.
Are there other things about the track field, for example, that can be fixed, or?
So one of the things with, the reasons for prioritization of the turf fields the way they are, is there's also drainage improvements on the sites. As you know, we're in a very low-line area with a high water table. So, um, the reason that we had the prioritization the way it was, we did the fields that were, um, draining, um, the worst, um, first. And Tallwood does have quite a bit of drainage issues right now that this project, not only will it install turf fields, but it'll also, um, correct a lot of the drainage issues on site, on their fields currently.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Tony Otto, we need to revert back to the original motion. So, do you have that information for motion and second? There we go. So the original motion was made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. And this motion is for the field replacement at Kellam High School. Is there any further discussion? Voting board is open.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, so the motion did pass for the high school, uh, Kellam High School turf field replacement.
Okay, now, is anybody gonna bring anything else up right now? Okay, Mr. Culpepper.
Okay, tell me if.
Why don't you reopen the consent vote fifteen, but remove B now, which I guess just leaves C, D, and E, which is the religious exemption, resolution on Thanksgiving, resolution on Ms. Kendrick, 'cause she would've already pulled out Kellam.
Okay, what I was gonna ask if I could do is separate, uh, Tallwood High School track and field improvements mo- um, from the consent agenda and reconsider. Can I do it that way?
All right.
I think it's fine, 'cause you've already amended it.
So I moved, I moved to separate Tallwood High School track and field improvements from the consent agenda and reconsider.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Culpepper, seconded by Ms., um, Manning, sorry.
I move to separate item B from the consent agenda and reconsider.
I don't have a button to push for a comment, but I'm putting myself in there. Yes, yeah, no, we just separated it. We just separated it.
Do you wanna, 'cause otherwise you're gonna take a second vote to approve the consent. Do you want to reopen the vote on the consent agenda, but remove Tallwood High School track and field? 'Cause then you could vote once.
Okay.
We're just voting on the Tallwood High School.
So this is the Tallwood High School vote. We're just voting on it once. We're opening it and voting on it at the same time. And so the board is open for discussion. I'm pressing my button.
Okay, since you approved it as part of this consent agenda, you, you need to reopen consent agenda, remove Tallwood High School from the consideration, and then vote on consent agenda. You're not voting on just Tallwood, you're revo- you're voting to approve the consent agenda without Tallwood.
Okay, all right, all right, so Mr. Culpepper's motion is.
Taken out A, so.
Mr. Culpepper's motion is to remove Tallwood.
We open, we, we open the consent agenda vote.
Okay.
And vote again, removing B, Tallwood High School track and field.
That's two votes right there.
No, no, it's one motion, it's a compound motion. So you're gonna reopen, 'cause this, the consent agenda vote, and re-vote on it without the Tallwood High School track and field.
All right, so that motion was made by Mr. Culpepper, seconded by Ms., Ms. Manning. All right. Correct, so just that, so no discussion, just, I mean, just to do that piece. We're not voting on the, uh, field yet. Okay, all right, any, voting board is open.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have nine ayes and two nays for the, uh, motion by Mr. Culpepper.
Okay. Okay, now. I need someone to make a motion on the Tallwood Field Improvements. Motion made by Mr. Cole Pe- no. Okay. No, we open to move it. All right, I'll entertain a motion to vote on the consent agenda without Tallwood High School being part of that consent agenda. Motion made by Ms. Kendrick. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Tallwood Field Maintenance and Improvements. Now we can say we've done it all, this is, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't experienced this one yet. Uh huh, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. Ms. Kend- Kendrick made the motion, seconded by. Mr. Cole Pepper. Seconded by Mr. Cole Pepper. All right, y'all know what we're voting on. This is the consent agenda. But this is not what we're doing with Tallwood yet, we're not there yet.
I wanna ask something about this.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, if this, if this doesn't pass. Do we keep the consent agenda, agenda we voted on?
Yeah, I mean, then we vote against, now we gotta undo what we did. So that's why. It's just to vote Tall- this Tallwood off, this piece off so we can talk about it because it was on consent.
I, this vote as drafted, you vote on Thanksgiving, Kendrick, and. Religious exemption.
Okay.
There is, unless you make a motion to add Tallwood somewhere else, Tallwood is off the agenda.
It's off the agenda, so we don't wanna do that.
Okay, so let's, let's do this first vote. We we have to vote on the consent agenda, so let's do that with those three. And then I'll entertain a motion otherwise, all right? Any other questions? The voting board is open. This is voting on the three items that still remain, Ms. Kendrick, Thanksgiving. Reli- yeah, okay. Okay, now we're back to.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, the motion did pass. To vote on the consent agenda without Tallwood High School track and field improvement.
Okay, now.
Ready to deal with Tallwood tonight, you just, it's not off the agenda, you can put it on another time period. Or you need to add something to action to deal with Tallwood, otherwise wait and put it on the twenty sixth if that's where you wanna deal with it.
Okay, so we'll talk, yes, Ms. Brown.
Can I move that we put the Tallwood High School Track and Field on the November twenty sixth agenda?
Motion made by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Um, sorry, I'm so sorry, every time, Manning. Um, that motion was to put the uh Tallwood High School Track and Field replacement. Um, field improvements on the twenty sixth agenda, we'll take care of that in agenda planning. All right, any further discussion? Yes, sir. On action.
Just wanna clarify with Ms. Ingram and company that delaying this does not do anything to. Or does that impact either the spring sports timing or riskiness of anything? Or are we crossing into a zone that's not wise?
Uh delaying the vote could cause us not to be able to be ready for summer, we would have to look at the schedule again, yes, sir.
Okay, so given that piece of information, does that change anybody's mind right now? It does mine, so.
So, let's just clarify, Tallwood High School right now is, has grass. They have grass on the field, they'll have grass on the field in in March. In May, in June, in July, in August, and they'll have grass. And right, so it's not gonna impact their season. It will, well, it will impact is, if the board wanted to move forward with turf fields, it would not be ready. By fo- football season, but they have grass right now.
So, a couple, yes, a couple of us are squirming about that because we made a commitment to our, to our citizens and.
So. It's two weeks. Uh, we should be able to work with the contractor for two weeks. So that you can feel comfortable with an important vote that has.
Okay.
An important amount of.
Just for clarification, have you awarded a contract? Okay, I mean, nothing happened from our first vote, like, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanna make sure that I didn't put something in motion in those few hours in between.
I didn't say that. So I'm glad you. So the the way that the question was worded, just cause I know your mic isn't on, is that this isn't gonna do anything to jeopardize, that's not what I said. What I said is, it's two weeks. It's a risk, I think it's a manageable risk, given the concern from the board. We don't wanna present to you a, uh, an environment where you think that the staff is telling you, if we don't get this thing, the world's gonna fall apart. It's not, it's gonna provide pressure. And going any further beyond the next meeting will delay that decision to Dr. Robertson's point. If that decision gets delayed, it's probably another year before they they'll play on turf. Or at least another year until we determine what the new guidance from the board is. The guidance from the board that we had is, use the money to incorporate turf fields at all of our high schools. If you update your guidance to us to do something different, then we will take a different route. So there will be pressure, we will need a direction at the next board meeting.
But I'd like to just add that in the future, if you don't know what something means on the consent agenda, please ask in advance. I'm not sure that we could repeat this if we tried, um, but we certainly got a lesson in parliamentary procedures this evening.
Madam Chair, can you please confirm who made the motion and who made the second? Thank you.
Yep, and the, this motion is to defer this discussion until Ja- um until November twenty sixth. And we will put it on the agenda at our agenda planning. Under action, we, we are. Voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes and one nay, so the motion did pass.
For some of us, the vote's not gonna change, so, um, okay. Um, moving on to um committee reports, I'm gonna start with Ms. Kendrick. Because she has an announcement for hopefully anybody who's still awake.
Yes, everybody awake? All right, do not dare drink coffee right now, you will not go to bed.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, yes, or sleep, our legislative committee um met on October twenty third. And we went over our legislative priorities, which will be presented to the board on our next meeting on November twenty sixth. Um, also, the committee agreed um to uh my proposed uh event. Which is our legislative breakfast that will be hosted on Friday, December thirteenth at eight AM. At the Workforce Training Center, um all of our legislative delegations have been invited, local, state, and federal. I think it's important to have our federal people there too because um they gave us the funding for the work workforce uh training center. And so I think it, it'd be wonderful for them to see what we've done with the funding, which is an amazing program. And I think it would be good for them to see if they give us some more money, what we can do with it, so. Um, it's all, again, it's on December thirteenth at eight AM.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty. Okay, it's eight thirty, it's late, it's eight thirty, it's late for me.
That's when the students get there.
Yes, the students get there, eight, okay. Um, yes, and so that's, that's it, I will, I won't.
You're gonna cancel the meeting for November four?
Yes, 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 so we had a, thank you, this is past my bedtime. This is the latest school board meeting that I've ever had, I thought I was on a winning streak.
We're gonna roll you out in style, roll you out in style.
Yes, been officially initiated, okay. So yes, we are canceling our November fourteenth meeting that was um scheduled because we've already covered everything, and that's all.
Okay, Ms. Weems.
Um, yes, um, the Mental Health Task Force met last week, um, I was in attendance, if you want the minutes, I'll be glad to forward those to you. Tomorrow is the Audit Committee at one fifteen, followed by the Jericho Road Properties Committee at three thirty. Workforce Development Committee will be um early December.
All right, I I I just wanna commend you all because this was more information than we have gotten in a really, really long time. A lot of great work, a lot of great camaraderie, Ms. Kendrick again, we love you for. Yes, and uh we thank you for everything you did, it is ten fifty-nine, good night.